It is now seven thirty P M on Thursday, September twenty first. I'd like to welcome you all to the Double Oak Town Council meeting. Appreciate everybody that's here in the chambers this evening. Our meeting this evening will be broadcast live on the Town of Double Oak YouTube channel. Once on the channel, please click on the live button and you'll be able to attend the meeting. Out of respect for all those in attendance, please refrain from talking to other members of the audience during the meeting and silent cell phones, please. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Eileen, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Protim Shonrod.
Here.
Mr. Wharton.
Here.
Ms. Hillier.
Ms. Wellen.
Here.
Mr. Dietrich.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Connie Shonrod will please lead us in invocation. Please bow your head.
Holy Father, thank you for the blessings of this town, our state, and our nation. We ask you for continued grace and mercy on our community as we gather tonight to conduct this important business. Lord, please guide this mayor and council body in the decisions required during this budget season. Please guide us to be fiscally wise and fair in our efforts to meet the needs of the residents of Double Oak and the employees who serve us small town. Please protect our military, border security, and first responders as they face many challenges and perils. Be with those who have suffered tragic losses and answer their prayers for comfort and provisions. Lord, we pray for all the government leaders and agencies at local, state, and federal levels that they would serve with honesty, integrity, and humility. We pray that the policymakers uphold the values of the Constitution and that the judicial system honors and protects the rights of its citizens and that the concerns of Americans throughout this country are heard. Please allow those charged to read out the corrupt and evil forces embedded in our government and its agencies be successful in their effort. For this we pray.
Thank you. Councilperson Pat Wellen will now lead us in the pledges. Thank you. Council, we've had some technical stuff happen with our microphone, so we're trying something new tonight. So Assistant Chief, Police Chief, Eileen Lynn, the mics are all hot. So if you would like to mute the mics, you have to hold down on the button. Otherwise, they are on all the time. Can you all hear us okay out there? We had some issues with it cutting out during the workshop last evening, and so we're going to try this and see if it's better or worse. So please bear with it. We will, tonight's meeting and other meetings, we seem to have been having some good success in moving the meetings along a little better than we did earlier. So we will limit all comments, discussions from the town council, citizens for tonight's meeting to three minutes each, with only two turns for comments for council members. Please adhere to the request. Council as the chair of the meeting, or as the chair of the meeting, I'll recognize you to provide your commentary, and then we will move to the next council person. We will have a timekeeper during all comments, and we'll stop you at three minutes. So I appreciate your, you've been doing really great with this, so thank you. So we have, first up is citizen comments, non-agenda subjects. This next segment of the council meeting is intended for citizen comments on any subject except for those that appear on the agenda. Those citizen comments at this time will not receive any verbal council response, nor must the citizen expect any discourse with the mayor or any other council member. This is a procedural rule, not intended to convey a lack of interest or discourtesy, but rather to provide time for all citizens to speak and to move on to the new business of the council. As a reminder, all proceedings of the town council, including citizen comments, are recorded for record-keeping purposes. I have one non-agenda item. It is Dave Hillier. Dave, would you please come on up? Please state your name and your address, please.
Is this on?
It should be on.
All right. Dave Hillier, one seven zero Prairie Oaks Drive, Double Oak Text. I wanted to speak at the last council meeting, not the one last night, but before, to compliment Chief Rivas on speaking up for his department at the budget meeting. I just want to point out to the chief, and he probably already knows this, that since Casey and Scott have left the council, there is no advocate for the police department. So you're going to have to be it. There is no council member that's an advocate for the police department. The mayor has taken on the job of being the advocate for the fire department, and I will say I think he's done a reasonable job at that so far. It got off to a shaky start, but he's proven his mettle in that start. But I would say for the chief and the assistant chief, don't miss any council meetings, don't miss any budget workshops, because you're at peril if you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Item number three, consent agenda. All consent agenda items are listed, are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for public review. First item on the consent agenda is the consideration and action on the minutes of the September fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Council, do you have any comments, adjustments to the minutes of the September fifth meeting?
I do not.
Okay. The second consent agenda item is really more procedural, but really more transparent. And that is that when we go to utilize any funds from the S L F R F funds that we have, we have approximately three hundred and, around three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the fund. Whenever this town council, whenever this mayor does anything in terms of touching that account or any expenditures, which are all legitimate, we will always bring them to the town, and we will do it through consent agenda. So as you all know, a previous council approved a drainage study for the town of Double Oak. A drainage study is getting very close to being final. There is part of the contract that says that as they are making progress, we must make payments. So we have had two invoices that have been submitted to the town, and during that approval, we clearly said and dedicated that these funds for this study would come from S L F R F. So we have consideration and action on invoices from half and half and associates, our town engineer, for the amount of twelve thousand nine twenty-six eighty-five, and for nineteen thousand one eighty-two seventeen. This is for the engineering services for the comprehensive drainage plan. Set invoices are to be paid out of the S L F R F balance. The study, the study was roughly around ninety-five, ninety-six thousand dollars. So we're still not even to halfway on the payment, but wanted to bring this to the citizens' attention, that we are now going to touch the S L F R F funds for the first time since we've got our second Trump. So council, any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda items.
A second. We have a motion by Mayor Protim Shonrod and a second by councilperson Dietrich. Eileen, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Wellen.
Hi.
Ms. Shonrod.
Hi.
Mr. Wharton.
Hi.
Mr. Dietrich.
Hi.
Item passes. Thank you. Item four, mayor council members and staff reports. As usual, I always like to kick it off with the council. So I'm going to start over here with the mayor. Nothing? Okay. Deputy Mayor Protim.
I got one thing. I ran on transparency, ethics reform, honesty, integrity, and support of our first responders. I think we all can agree that we love our Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department and our Double Oak Police Department. We have heard from many residents about our Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department and how they've saved lives, and we thank the Double Oak Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Department for their hard work.
Councilperson Wellen.
Nothing.
Councilperson Dietrich.
Nothing.
Thank you all. I just have a few comments tonight, and that is that, you know, as a mayor, I will do a better job of making sure that we look at all of the details when it comes to the agendas and such. Monday evening, we had an unfortunate situation, which is why you're all sitting here on Thursday. And even though a mistake was made, the mayor owns this, and I take responsibility for the fact that the meeting had to be postponed and moved till today. I do appreciate you all coming out, and I will do a much better job of looking at all the details so we don't put you through having to sit through a second meeting for some of you that were here for both nights. So just want to let you know, I'll get better. Okay? Thank you. Public Works Code Enforcement Animal Control. I don't see Randall. Did we have any comments or anything from?
Nothing.
I will say this, I talk to Randall quite often, and we're starting to really see an uptick in folks getting their houses reshingle. Quite frankly, his job is a full-time job anyway, but more importantly, just trying to get everybody checked out, at least the first time or one time. So if for some reason you see something or you're not aware of something that's taking place in your neighborhood that you want to question, what are we supposed to do, Chief? We call, we call nine-one-one, ask for the chief, right?
Yes, sir.
So do not hesitate, please, because we don't need anybody in getting in a situation where there's people that shouldn't be there and some sort of an injury or accident or something happened to your property. So I know Randall's been keeping on top of it, and obviously, I just, I'm just seeing way more and more and more crews out there. So please do your diligence. Thank you. Administration.
I think, yeah, handout and balance sheet or in the second.
When?
I do not have anything.
Okay. Thank you. Public Safety.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. In your package, you have the survey for the street reports on Kings Road, and, I'm sorry, not Kings Road, Simmons Road, four hundred blocks of Simmons Road southbound. And as you can tell, there's more traffic count from that location on that timeframe. As we know, there's a lot of cars that travel down that road. The other report that you have, I don't want to go into all these details, we've got a long night, is Cedar Crest. We put the trailer out at Cedar Crest for a week, and the total count on that was only three thousand fifty cars. That was combined of total number of cars. And of course, like any other street, you're going to have somebody that will exceed the posted speed limit. We can look at this later and discuss the numbers. I know we have a long night. Also, you announced yesterday that I had let you know that we did give a conditional job offer to an applicant pending his drug and psych test. So I don't see an issue with it. We have him starting Monday.
Next.
Start training with us. So we're finally at full staff, and we'll be able to provide a better service to our citizens and so forth. So we look forward for him to join our team and getting out there and working.
I'm excited.
Well, coming was only three thousand on Cedar Crest.
Hey, compared to the other streets.
Obviously, it gets used a lot because it has that stoplight at four o'clock and so, but it's a lot.
So I, I'll, the last couple of weeks, I've been putting some of the statistics in the Friday update. I'll continue to do so. When I get the report and I stare at it for the first time, I'm completely amazed. What I did talk to Chief about was, it's pretty exciting to see all these numbers now, but we really need to get about ninety days of data with different streets, you know, leave it on there for, to the same time for this street and that street, so we can start to take a look at some trend data. I think there's so much information we're pulling off this trailer, we don't even know what to do with it, but we will sit down and figure out how we can divine as much as possible. And I truly believe this trailer is going to assist in terms of, and I don't, I'm not putting words in his mouth, but we've talked about this, is how he ends up staffing and where he puts his officers at certain times during the day and during the evening and such. So I was excited when we, when it was presented by Mayor Protim and the chief in regards to the speed trailer, and I'm even more excited now that it's out there actually working and giving us the data. So Chief, great job. Is there anyone here from Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department?
What, the citywide?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, we received our first batch, but they didn't come pre-drilled with hose. So we reached out to the company and they had somebody new doing the signs, so they expedited the other ones, and they're on their way.
I heard somewhere posted, though, already visible.
Oh, did, I thought, I didn't know they were out there.
Right. Citizen said it, one of the citywide signs is already visible.
I don't know. I wasn't aware. I thought it was still.
I.
Okay, well, I guess Randall.
They're not going to waste, and they're already advertising that we are thirty miles.
Excellent. Yeah, I mean, these are, they seem like minor steps, but they're not. We know what we are facing, especially now and into the future, and we're trying to get in front of it as best as we can. And so I applaud everybody's ideas. Citizens, bring your ideas, please. We've had some, Mr. Chavez that's over on Simmons has come here and offered really good suggestions. If you're living, you don't have to live on these streets in order to send us some ideas in an email or stop by and let us know here at the council. So thank you.
Mayor, one of the things we, you and I discussed was, I know there's some citizens that would like the trailer in front of their home. Just free to send an email, and we'll put it on the schedule, and it makes it easier where I don't have to go ask for permission to put the trailer in front of their residence there, but I'll be more than happy to schedule that in our rotation so we can get it out We have a new system that the county used, so we were able to use the system before and let you know the number of citations that we were writing, warnings and certain citations. We just kind of got a new system, and they have not shown us how we've been retrieve that data from this. So once that's available to us again, it'll be posted to the council and on our website.
So if you've got a packet or you looked at it, you might notice that we now have two items on our council members and staff reports. We have split our Roads and Drainage Committee up into two separate entities. We've been backfilling and filling the positions. So is there anyone from Roads Committee here tonight to discuss anything specifically about the road? We are in the middle of the crack seal. We've got it on multiple streets going on. I've noticed a lot of the new tar on the street. So if you drive up and you see a crew working, try to do your best not to drive through the tar, plus you don't want it on your car anyway. But we're excited to see that, and we're already working on next year's mill and overlay as well as the next year's crack seal. This is an ongoing, never going to change, is never going to end, but we're going to get in front of it, and we're going to do it earlier and better as we move forward. Drainage Committee. This is newly formed. I don't see anybody here, but I think probably the first big item that they're going to have on their list is to start to decipher the engineering and drainage study. So appreciate that. Item number five, New Business Agenda. We have a presentation from Span Incorporated and a discussion and consideration and action on an interlocal agreement for services with Span Inc. We have a presentation by Max Calder. He is the Span Director of Operations. So it's going to take me one second to get your, your up there on the board.
Thank you so much, Mayor Johnson, Town Council Chief, and also city staff, Lynn and Eileen in particular. Thanks for meeting me in advance of this. And for the guests, thank you very much for being here.
When you need to move through this, just say next, and I will move it through.
Okay, will do. So we're here on this evening, and I apologize for dating it wrong, that was for Monday, but now on Thursday, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, to discuss Span.
This done is before. Give me one second.
I'll try to go through this way off.
Yeah. Can we turn that off and turn it back on? It's our goods.
For whatever reason, when I do it, I have to go this way off.
Okay. All right, I'll try that if it doesn't come back. Apologize, folks. And then what you do, you pick the finger and pull down the D Y O, bring your own device onto each screen, just pull it down. Nope. All right. Let me, let me try something. All right.
Got it.
Well, let's not go there yet, folks. Okay, and I apologize for that.
Oh, Mayor Johnson, no problem at all, and thank you again. We can go ahead and transition to the next slide, please. Okay, first of all, Span Inc. is a nonprofit established in nineteen seventy-four, based in the city of Denton, eighteen hundred Malone Street. We serve, we try to work with people with disabilities and older adults and veterans who live as fully and independently as possible throughout Denton County. We do also offer some services on the transportation side to veterans from Denton County all the way into either referred VA medical appointments or to the VA in Dallas or Fort Worth on a daily basis, Monday through Friday. Next, please. Meals on Wheels is our separate unit of business. This is overseen by three full-time staff. This particular fiscal year, last fiscal year, I should say, we delivered over a hundred and twenty-four thousand meals. By the way, demand higher than we've ever seen post-COVID. This year's projected to come in after September concludes. I'm confident we're going to hit a hundred and fifty-two thousand plus. So demand is large, getting larger. A lot of folks may have heard Denton County is now over a million people. All clients receive five hot meals per week, and that is through home-delivered. And then there is also a congregate meal program where folks can show up right now at thirteen sites. That's throughout Denton County and different municipalities and unincorporated community. There should be two more congregate sites opening up soon. One will be one of your neighbors, close, relatively close by in Hickory Creek, working with a faith-based partner that does have a nice facility and looks like it'd be a great space to accommodate congregate meals. Next, please. This is a photo of team members that includes site managers, also the program manager who works in the same building as me, and then her assistant, pardon me, her supervisor, Meals on Wheels program supervisor. They do a combination of scheduling, training, support, not on that list particularly, but still another duty as assigned, certainly fundraising and events that ends up falling on all of us to really support a very small, right-sized organization, but not a lot goes into admin. We'll try to get the money into the service. Next, please. Senior Paws, this is a very popular program for qualified Meals on Wheels program recipients. This goes to the furry friends. It is to help prevent older adults from having to share their meals, which we did observe was happening with their pets. This is a bag or a right amount of dog food to help support their pet. This is a challenging program to operate, incredibly popular, resonates at fundraisers everywhere. Meanwhile, it's very challenging because it's unfunded from a regularly occurring funding stream, which always becomes a starting point, and then you build the program with additional fiscal support. This is unfunded, so we rely exclusively on donations, fundraising, and other opportunities. Big goal, strategic goal for us is identifying a potential group of title sponsors and then selecting a title sponsor, maybe appearing in a, something like that, they put the name on the red. Next, please. What we're primarily here for this evening, our request is related to span transportation. Span Transportation is demand response, dial-a-ride. It provides a fully accessible fleet and offers dial-a-ride service, book the day before for people with disabilities, older adults, and veterans. Next, please. Passenger fare is three dollars. Approved trip purposes. And oftentimes, we do categorize a trip as recreation. I want to mention ninety-nine percent of the markets that use the span at the discounted fare, three dollars, which is what our request for local subsidies about, are for very essential trip. Recreation, in fan's case, means Silver Sneakers, which means seniors in motion, that means fitness activity, potentially with a personal trainer, which is substitute, next evolution up from something like physical therapy with a nurse or a primary care. All of these services, then, trip purposes that we do operate, we look at as essential trips. Most of our, I should say, all of our contracts to be to agree with that, medical, stopping the subsidies pharmacy, public libraries, senior programs, socialization, get folks to the ability to sustain their independence in many cities, like Collins, support, the fair, they subsidize the fair for people going, it increases senior center traffic flow, and it's a good incentive for students to get out, so to buy some services. Employment, education, nutrition, again, recreation, and I caveat of that, where Silver Sneakers may not be medical, however, it's certainly health-related, and unequivocally, somebody participating in many of those fitness activities designed for older adults is avoiding more significant potential health issues and longer term, something utterly essential like that. Next, please. Okay, we are our transportation frontline. I titled this frontline. It really is, I've worked at a lot of transit properties around the country, San Diego Metropolitan Transit, which, LA Metro, up in San Joaquin County, California. I had divisions under my name, Colorado, New York, Arizona, when I worked with my private side. Span's workforce, credit going to John Corinato and the others, professionals that come across, retention very high. This includes professionally trained drivers that know how to drive each vehicle type, how to follow the Smith system, how to see the big picture, always see something, never fail to say something. Dispatch, these folks use the scheduling system, they know how to use it, they know how to work as a team, and they're there with incredibly low hold times and always available with a verbal smile on their faces, talking to drivers and passengers throughout the day, it's a non-stop position. And scheduling, right now, there's one person who does all of the scheduling, that is a physician, which we're more than happy to authorize remote work. It's best left, not antisocial, but not with any human contact throughout the day than is necessary. It truly is probably a nine to nine-and-a-half hour daily job to do it the way you want to do it, and we have eight hours of quote-unquote work that pay time for that individual. So when they start, they get right into the scheduling, they take their appropriate breaks, and they get right back to the scheduling, scheduling usually wraps up later in the day, the day before service requests, sometime between four and five o'clock, and then everybody either automatically contacted or directly contacted with their trip times to the next day. Next slide, please. Our fleet, oh, once again, a credit, I was with Span in twenty fifteen and sixteen. Maintenance was a major challenge. Right now, should be a bigger challenge, but we're doing much better than we were then. Ricky Dela- Uh, Ricky Delapaz, the maintenance manager, the quality and maintenance person, as I've been around in thirty, now, we currently have over thirty vehicles. Um, we need to dispose of three or four of those, they're way past useful, like, uh, five years, hundred and fifty thousand. Um, some of those units, twenty fifteen, sixteen, still running and driving, still safe to operate, still effective in service, uh, they should have been retired three years ago. That's due to, uh, the, the delays are due to the supply chain post-COVID. What used to take getting a brand-new minibus, or even minivan, even a van, uh, six months, I could order seventy, I expect to see them, um, after that order's placed and, uh, the Buy America certificate comes back. Currently, eighteen months, what you're getting one, um, let alone high numbers, it may even take long. Used to be a scale, uh, like in LA Metro, may get their vehicles expedited because they're so large and the invoices are so big, not the case anymore. Everybody these days, uh, uh, all, uh, the lower forty-eight, Hawaii, Alaska, everybody's waiting for, uh, not months, but years to get vehicles, so the delivery schedules are really delayed. Hopefully, that straightens out, I've heard it might in the next five years. Meanwhile, we're getting eight new vehicles in the next two weeks from purchased by North Central Texas Council of Governments. That's gonna be huge relief, that's gonna be a net gain of three vehicles and really position us to operate more effective service and bring the fleet, um, day-to-day reliably into a state of good repair by twenty-twenty-three standards. Next slide, please, and the fleet, I highlight once again, is fully accessible. City support, and this is why, um, I asked, uh, for the, uh, invitation, and I'm so thankful that you all let me come and talk about what we do, uh, CARESAC money. Uh, we have had a contract with Double Oak for the last three years, that's during COVID. CARESAC, a lot of us for a variety of, uh, sectors in the public agency have been a beneficiary of CARESAC. Well, this year, if that money's not obligated, and ours is for this year, or spent, it will need to be returned to the federal government, particularly in transit space, so CARESAC money is gonna carry us through, at the soonest, December, realistically sometime between January fifteenth, February fifteenth, and we will use every penny of CARESAC money to support local service, even if it's split month. We wouldn't, uh, request any funding from a city, um, other than the trips that were not subsidized, let's say, in that given month. I highlight here that the projected nine-month average based on current counts in Double Oak is not a lot of volume. These are two unduplicated clients currently using, uh, service, uh, uh, ninety-five-plus percent of the time for medical purposes or other essential trips, they're very important trips, and, um, that is based on, uh, again, the current projection, so not a lot of service, that's nine months of service, twenty-seven trips. Highest month I've seen, it was the same two riders, were six trips in a given month this last fiscal year. Uh, it's as few as zero, and if it's zero, um, with most of the city's larger populations, larger demand, the invoices from Span come annually, um, or excuse, pardon me, monthly. In a case of something this size, it would be quite easy, probably most efficient, to look at something just like an annual invoice, with an invoice up to the requested five-hundred and forty-seven dollars. That's measured by multiplying each trip by twenty dollars and twenty-four cents. That twenty dollars and twenty-four cents is post-net, so any expenses paid for entirely by council of governments for a tax dot would not be included in that twenty dollars and twenty-four cents, and we're actually matching the net, which is forty dollars and forty-eight cents, with a exactly half, fifty percent, fifty percent, so there's fifty percent of, a hundred percent additional double, the five forty-seven, uh, would be the full cost, but half of that's coming through fifty-three oh seven, that's urban grant formula funding that, uh, we get to operate in our urban areas, leaving a remainder of twenty dollars and twenty-four cents. Demand response service on, in the open industry, I was just in, recently, um, at a property in San Joaquin, California, very similar, uh, demographically to the entirety of Denton County, and the average trip cost there on Van Go, which was a specialized dial-a-ride service, was a hundred and ten dollars. So, there, there's a wide range, but definitely twenty dollars and twenty-four cents is on the relatively low side. And, um, I highlight the unduplicated client count at this point, I'll look again at the end of September, see if any new riders have, um, begun using Span in September, but it's standard to right now. And with that, uh, final slide, I'm, uh, please, and, um, I thank you all very much for your consideration and your time, and appreciate this opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Max, thank you.
My pleasure.
Great presentation.
Oh, thank you very much.
So, council, um, questions for Matt?
So, I did have one for you, I think you may have answered this, but I just want to make sure I clarify. So, we've had two people that have been using the service from Double Oak.
That is correct.
They've used, y'all are expecting twenty-seven, does that mean these two have taken multiple trips?
It, it does, that is correct. They, they have taken the, the, the trips throughout the year, so between October and what would have been the very end of August, those two individuals took those, uh, twenty-seven trips.
Okay, and we continue with this, even though you're saying twenty-seven trips is what is expected, you'll only bill us if they take those, we're not.
Absolutely. It's one hundred percent reimbursable, never ask for money, and that's why I would never send an invoice, let's say, until what would be, um, next year in November or October, um, or, excuse me, in October through Sep, to start of the fiscal year, and it would be in October with the tabulation of exactly the riders and, and whatever report council or staff want to see, we can provide as much anonymized information, protected by just the rider ID, proving it's an unduplicated client. Meanwhile, it's everything from address, origin, destination, times, uh, frequency, and, and the list of variables goes on, so we, we capture a lot of data, it, it's all available very quickly with the automated system. Once it's, uh, reviewed, audited, and scrubbed, as we say, uh, we could get that report to in about fifteen minutes, and that would be, in, in Double Oak's case, an annualized report, so you wouldn't see an invoice. Meanwhile, what I can do is with Lynn and with Eileen, send a trip count each month, so you're looking at what will be, expect to see what's actually happening, so nobody's coming in wondering, waiting till the end of fiscal year, and we do all those reports on a monthly basis, and even before we invoice, which again, won't be at all until, uh, soonest February or January, but will still give you an idea what demand looks like, October, November, December.
And just to clarify, the two individuals, they're using for essential reasons, medical trips.
That is correct, right.
We can make the assumption if that wasn't there for them, they may have difficulty
If, if it wasn't there, they, yes, and most people, uh, the nature of demand response, it's, it's heavily subsidized, it's also, the goal is shared ride. The more fare that's captured for the more people riding at one time reduces the trip cost to the funders, and it allows us to operate more service. So, shared ride, demand response service, and I've worked in a lot of markets, is generally only used by people that really don't have another viable option to get where they're going. And, and it would, those two individuals should probably be included, not that we've surveyed them and asked directly, but based on where they're going, uh, it definitely isn't a central trip, and presumably, they'd have great challenges getting there if they had another option, which is, you know, admittedly, more convenient than paying the three-dollar fare and using a shared ride service with very, very viable ride times is somebody just simply taking it where they need to go. But anybody with a mobility device, et cetera, uh, as many people as there are with disabilities in the country, very few people have accessible vans, and even accessible vans aren't gonna transport some of the individuals with the larger mobility device types, especially electric, uh, devices.
Now, do, uh, Double Oak resident, how do you inform Double Oak residents they can use Span?
We try to do that in, um, just the standard marketing, um, campaigns that, that we do, keeping people aware, we'll present in any venues. Um, I started back with Span in May, this coming fiscal year, as we go through our mobility management activities, my plan is to start much sooner, like in March, April, in advance of any contracts or budget talks, to make cities aware, including Double Oak, of the services, how much volume we're doing, and then also, uh, volunteer our time through that process to get in front of your residents, if there's particular, uh, nonprofit groups, grassroots groups, and you'd like us to come and talk directly to the user about Span, we'd love the opportunity, and we'll make arrangements, and it doesn't have to be at a particular time, just give us, um, a, a group you have in mind, we'll take care of reaching out to them, and we'll bring the right team on site to talk about everything we do, including Meals on Wheels, if there happened to be Meals on Wheels demand in Double Oak.
Do you have flyers?
Uh, we have brochures, and actually, brochures and public information, which I am happy to share, I can email that to, uh, website links, policies, procedures, another useful document, which covers all the bases, really helpful. I can send all that info to Eileen and Lynn and, uh, make it available for anybody that would like to see it. We, we, we love to share it, we want more people aware of it.
Because I could poke around the website, and Span is under transportation on our ser, service provider page, that's the only place I got it, but we have two users in town for essential needs.
Yep.
If we had brochures for something, we might be able to get more people to participate in the Span program. It sounds like an important feature for Bailey, like, for these folks in our town.
Yeah, be happy to provide that, and also, for your residents, nothing that would ever show up on an invoice, it's subsidized through Texas Veterans Commission, but those trips I mentioned to VA for anybody in Denton County, um, anybody in Double Oak that is a veteran, if they have the DD two fourteen, they will qualify, and they will have a ride for free, by the way, no fare for that, it's totally subsidized to the VA, and we have a really nice standalone brochure for veteran service, which won't go to any cost impacts, but you might have some users that could really benefit from it.
We do have one, uh, citizen question, if you could come up to the mic and identify yourself with your name and address, and then ask your question, and Max, I'm sure we'll answer it for you.
Happy to. Kenan Moffett, one forty, Shady Oaks Lane, Double Oak. Uh, are you licensed or permitted to pick up an individual who's had a medical procedure involved in the use of anesthesia at a hospital or a medical clinic, because?
We are not licensed specifically to do that, we are a public transportation, not specialized transportation, so the, the answer is actually, it depends on the situation. If a physician does release a patient and they're discharged without aid to ride Span, then they could certainly book the trip, depending on the procedure. Meanwhile, if the physician's not comfortable, or let's say the patient's wife, their caretaker, um, saying that the person can safely travel alone, then we wouldn't be able to. It's a level of service that really would, with the focus the driver has to have on the road, what we do not provide are aids on vehicles. It'd be a great add, it's, um, would be a very popular program, but adding an aid to a vehicle, and you double the labor, um, labor's the biggest cost driver, uh, fuel being second, but with that additional team member, you're looking at the twenty-twenty-four, possibly going up to like a thirty-six, thirty-seven, it becomes, uh, from a budget standpoint, a lot less overall service to provide due to the extra team member, so it depends on the nature of the procedure, something serious, and on anesthesia, somebody traveling with, let's say, fluids, et cetera, intravenously, not that we wouldn't transport the device or the person, and if the person was traveling with, uh, someone qualified or who knew them well, they could take care of him, we'll make that trip, and that person could travel for free as a personal care attendant, PCA, but we wouldn't be able to transport them alone in any safe manner, or, or trained manner, for that matter.
We have another citizen, please come up and identify yourself and ask your question.
Hey, Tommy Meyer, one seventy, Park Lane, Double Oak, Texas. Thank you for coming up, because I'm very interested in this, couple of questions for the vets. A long way from Double Oak to Dallas, a long way from Double Oak to Fort Worth. So, if I wanted to use it and realize that it doesn't cost me anything, how do I get back home? Because some of the trips, you may, you may spend two or three hours at the VA.
Right.
So, that's, that's, thank you very much.
Okay, the, I'm glad you asked that question, good question, and the key is, you have your appointment, a person has, a veteran, their appointment at the VA in Dallas, it's a long way down, it certainly is. Span makes one trip down to the VA in the morning, arriving by no later than nine AM, drops everybody off. Meanwhile, that vehicle returns back to Denton, ideally with as full of a bus as possible. Another bus goes down to the VA from Denton with another sweep at noon, returns after arriving at the VA in the early afternoon, hopefully, again, with as close to a full load as possible. One final bus returns, uh, goes down to VA at right around five o'clock in the evening, it's the last bus in the yard every evening, and then it returns back to Denton after dropping off everybody where they need to go, and, um, the person would know about that trip confirmation the day before the trip, uh, what time they're gonna be picked up, which, and depending on the nature of their appointment, which, which of the combination of three opportunities to get to VA and back are, are available and work best for them.
That's amazing. Yes, you may, please come back up.
Absolutely, yep, the pickups would start depending on the volume, could start much earlier than that, and it will arrive as late as nine, that's based on experience with the traffic in, in that corridor, but, um, we, we will be able to get there by nine, it could be earlier, but showing up a little bit early to an appointment's a good thing, and there's less stress of the traffic, a more comfortable place to just relax without the grind of the thirty-five, but, um, yeah, and, and the person would know what time they're gonna be picked up the day before, so they can expect it, and different people, different corridors, the person in Aubrey's gonna have a very different pickup time than the person in Double Oak, and then compare that with somebody who might be in Flower Mound, y'all have, you know, staggered by the guy. My pleasure, thank you.
Counsel, other question? I, I just had one question, just to validate. So, the, the five hundred and forty-seven dollars, that's the contribution, or will it, you'll need more, or you need less, or that's exactly what you?
Uh, that's exactly what the projection is, if the town is open-minded to more, if there were, let's say, three, four, five new users, we graciously come back and ask to come back to council, update the council, and then that's your decision to make, and there's a couple options, it's either limit service as much as possible, this is our not-to-exceed amount, or open-ended, and we won't have any invoice or reconciliation to, to manage as partners until the end of the fiscal year after you've been updated on a regular basis with volumes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else, counsel? I did want to remind you that, that, not necessarily that we know it's gonna get passed or not, because the council asked to vote, um, but we did identify, um, money in council contingency if we were to vote the item.
Wonderful, so, thank you so much.
So, if there's no further discussion, um, so, presentation from Span Incorporated, discussion, consideration, and action on the interlocal agreement for services with Span, uh, do we have a motion?
I move to enter into contractual agreement with Span for the interlocal agreement for services, not to exceed six hundred dollars for the budget year and to entertain the reasons of the council if volume exceeded. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Protem Jonrad, and a second by Councilperson Wellen. Eileen, could you please follow vote?
Mr. Portman.
Uh, aye.
Ms. Beatrix.
Aye.
Ms. Wellen.
Aye.
Ms. Jonrad.
Aye.
Agenda item number nine, presentation from Span Incorporated, discussion, consideration in action on the interlocal agreement for services with Span, not to exceed six hundred dollars, and giving you the opportunity, if it would exceed six hundred, to come back to council, passive.
Thanks, yeah.
Max, thank you.
Thank you very much, you guys made my evening, I appreciate it, thank you all, we'll see you again soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You enjoy your evening, since we only took a couple of them. Thank you, great presentation.
And if you could provide those flyers to, I mean, we get that on the website to let more people know about Span.
You could disconnect. There we go, all right. We're gonna go ahead and leave that down, we're gonna need it here in a little bit. Um, counsel, I'm going to switch up a couple of agenda items here tonight, um, because we have a, a very special guest, I feel, um, and that is Deputy Chief of EMS for Flower Mound, uh, Fire Department, Dean Feldpoch is here. Um, Dean, if you want to stand up and say hello. Uh, we've had, uh, a, a, a very professional, um, negotiation for EMS contract, but we do have some citizens that have still had some questions, and, uh, chief was gracious enough to call me and say, hey, And Chief was gracious enough to call me and say, hey, I know you've still got some questions. There's some folks that are still inquiring about some of the numbers. Yeah, go ahead and come on up. And, and so I asked the chief to come tonight. But before I have you speak, Chief, we do have one citizen, Dave Hillier. Please come up and identify yourself. And I thought, Dave, the best thing to do is instead of me trying to be third party in things, that we get it right back to Flower Mountain.
Okay. Dave Hillier, 170 Crane, excuse me, Double Oak, Texas. I spent quite a bit of time trying to decipher this presentation from Flower Mountain and Patrick's response to it. And what I came, came to the conclusion was that it's almost impossible to make total sense of it. So here's, here's what Dave Hillier thinks. That the, I'm talking about slide five of their presentation. They, on item two, they say the average, no, on item four, they say the total expense is $982,000 and change. And they say that they have, their total call volume is 4,289. So if I divide 280 or 932,000 by 4,249 calls, that comes up to $231 per call. Then they go on to list a bunch of things that they list by the hour. And it takes, it takes somebody that knows federal government or government contracting to understand how they took an hourly number and ended up with a per call number. But they went from total expense number of 231 per call to what they say their cost per call was $2,200. Now, my point is, I know they have a Rolls Royce system and they do an excellent job, but I think we should pay more like Ford prices for. And our, the negotiation that I think we should do is we should pay, they advertise that their, their per call cost when they compare to all the other organizations is $850 per call. Now, if you take $850 a call and subtract the $489, this is for transport calls, subtract the $489 that they receive from insurance, that leaves $626 per call that is, that they don't bill for. Basically, they don't balance bill. So Double Oak should be on the hook for 86 calls times $626. Now, for the other 40 calls that they don't charge for, and I personally don't understand how you call an ambulance and you get no charge. The ambulance arrives, they find no problems, they don't charge you. Now, if Double Oak has taken that on and said, we're fine with that, I guess it's okay. It's not okay with me, but I guess it's okay. Double Oak decided that. But we should pay probably the $231 per call for the calls that they don't charge for. And so that brings our total, in my estimation, to about $53,000 a year that we would contract with Flower Mountain for. Now Flower Mountain has, like I said, a Rolls Royce system and I, there's just no way we should pay $2,200 per call for anything. But we need to pay our fair share. And I believe our fair share is about $53,000 a year currently for 120 calls a year. If you took the full 850 times the 120 calls, that comes to $102,000. We've, Patrick agreed to $120,000, you know? So I don't know how you came to that number when, when the, when the total cost is 850 according to them. And then that's listed on, when we give you the chart number, whatever. But anyway, that's, that's my point. My point is I think that we over, that we overpaid for what we got. We are not, I don't want to be a partner with Flower Mountain. I know they're, they're a class operation. I don't want to be their partner. I want to be a customer. And I think that we want to buy excess, excess, excess calls they have. I mean, if the guy's sitting in the, in the thing 24/7, which they do, and they're not taking calls, they're, you know, they're not making any money. So what, what we are 3%, of their total call volume. So we're not a partner of theirs. We're a customer of it. And as a customer, I think they're paying too much at 120 per year. That's my point.
Thank you, Dave.
Question is, my question is, I don't know how you add into the ask of $186,000 that you want from Double Oak. When the cost to Double Oak ought to be in a, at the most, it would be $112,000 if you charge this 850 for every call that we took and we had.
Chief, if I could have you step up to the mic.
It's a fair question. And we need to be good stewards of municipal money. It doesn't matter whether it's Flower Mountain money or Double Oak money. So let's be good stewards. It is a complex calculation. This is more or less an industry, a fire service industry standard to apply this, break it down to a unit hour, apply the depreciation. You've mentioned, what was it, Rolls Royce Service?
Yeah.
We're very proud of the service we provide. The service we provide, I agree with them. So in other ways, we try to buy responsible ambulances. I made a call today to try to purchase two ambulances right off the line, a stock base model. They're very difficult to get. We were fortunate to, to get the ones we have coming. They're pretty, but they're cheap. And so we're getting the lowest level we can possibly buy, quite frankly. Well, the, an ambulance's service life is from five to seven years. We've depreciated over five years. The wear and tear on the vehicle, the multitude of calls, we just, we don't see much service life after that. It goes into reserve status for a few years after that and we try to stretch it out as long as we can. The last ambulance we purchased was $459,000. That's just one of the three frontline. We have five total. So we depreciate that out and we have to, we have to include that in our cost estimate. The same as a fire station. The last fire station we built was station number seven for 7.5 million. I used the number 4.5 million, which is a much lower average than these figures, to try to defray the cost of money. It didn't seem fair. There are sunk costs in what we do. We realize that. But if you just take the number of calls, and let's, let's use the number that's on the table here today. $59,000 times, what's the current call volume for?
Double Oak.
103. From September 21st of '22 to today, we have responded to 130. So the number's actually down a little bit. If you do the math, what do we get? 59 divided by 103. How much is that a call?
Who's got the calculator?
57281. Let me make sure.
57281.
So 572 is what is, is actually what the money covers that we're asking for. Our actual call per, cost per call has actually dropped since the last time we visited. It's now $1,943 per Flower Mountain to respond to a call. And so Chief Henley has authorized this, this service level because he believes that it's much needed. There are a few alternatives and we're very aware of that. Don't want to get into the weeds on that, but. Absolutely it is. Those, that's money that. I'm sorry. Can you get it more specific? I'm not sure.
There's a, there's a, there's a presentation right here. That's a Flower Mountain presentation.
Okay, I've updated those numbers and because of the lower call volume, we've been able to lower it and because again of some other changing numbers in here that they change frequently, unfortunately. It's 1943 now. So we dropped from that number down to 1943. And tomorrow's. Can I be honest with you?
Yeah.
Doesn't make any sense to me either. It doesn't make sense to a lot of folks. And there, there are some that are saying that Flower Mountain is subsidizing healthcare for Double Oak. We, we choose to believe that you're our neighbors. We need to help each other. I promise you, that's the motivation here. Plain and simple.
I don't deny that. Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm. The only point I'm trying to make, I think Flower Mountain, like I said, I think they got a Rolls Royce system. But I, but you have excess capacity. You created the system. If your guys are sitting around not taking calls, you're better off having a paper call get paid for it than to sit in the firehouse and let go, right?
Essentially, you're, you're correct. You know, the troops get paid hourly like anybody. So, so they're going to get paid either way. We recover, as you know, about $480 per transport, not a lot. And so we're basically, if you look at what's happening in Fort Worth right now, MedStar just had to get 4.2 million dollars from the, the city of Fort Worth and the 14 cities that participate in the healthcare system in that, in that area, or they go under. There will be no healthcare in Fort Worth. They are trying, they are scrambling trying to find a solution. We don't want that. We, we don't want there to be a vacuum. So we're, we're filling this vacuum for today and hopefully for a long time.
I think I made that, but I, I just, I know, I think Flower Mountain was the place, but recently Double Oak did. We did want Flower Mountain to come over and Flower Mountain to access.
I don't blame you.
I think $102,000 top one of the absolute max we should pay because they think the call time, the total number of calls we have. I don't know how we came up with a number higher than.
I would, I legitimately would be delighted to go over with you one-on-one. We can sit down and go over each line and I will explain it to you as best I can. This is a difficult form to explain, this tedious, tedious of, of a computation. But I respect your question very much and I admire you for asking it. And I would just ask you to just trust the numbers because I've, I've done it 10 times. And about the time I think it right, Chief Henley goes, go run them again. Because he, he knows y'all deserve the right answer. Yes, sir. Anything, anything else, sir?
Did you, did you want to make any comments about our negotiation?
I did want to, I did want to clear one thing up. The last time I had the honor of speaking to the council, the doctor was like, good evening, everybody. I didn't even say good evening. The last time that I was here, I, I said, I stated that Flower Mountain provides the medical control. We pay for that for the town of Double Oak. I was wrong. I got an invoice from the physician and there was two of them. One for us and one for our friends in Double Oak. And so I was wrong and I, I would apologize to Chief Wizzenhund if he was here, but I was absolutely wrong on that. So I wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Thanks for having me out.
I appreciate everything.
Thanks for letting us come out and explain.
Yeah, I appreciate everything that Chief Henley and Chief Duffield have done. But more importantly, the camaraderie and the partnership that we have, have found bonded with as we work through this. It's not a difficult thing, folks. We had a, a deal with Flower Mountain that basically was too good to be true for many, many years. And we got to a point where it just could not be afforded by Flower Mountain. And we sat down at the table, they made an offer, we made a counter offer, just like happens in negotiation. And in the middle of our negotiation, Chief Henley listened and he took action to adjust the numbers from Flower Mountain, as I'd stated when I did the presentation. I think he was more than generous with what he did. We offered the step up program so that it assists this budget. It assists next year's budget and the following year's budget to get to those numbers. Flower Mountain didn't have to do that. Flower Mountain could have sent us the bill for 120 and said, pay it and here you go. And by the way, pay it and won. But they didn't do that. That's, that's a partnership. So, excuse me, Dave, with all due respect, EST is not an option. It is not. Point of, point of, we're, we're, we've been well down the road with this negotiation. And I think we've worked a really, really good deal. In fact, when I talked to the chief of EST, he said it was a very good deal that we have. So the generosity that Flower Mountain has shown, the courtesy that they have shown me, I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I please share that with Chief Duffield and Chief Henley. So now what I'd like to do is open up the council for any question.
Can you just verify, I do believe we have support from Chief Wizzenhund on the steel log.
Yes, we do. In fact, as part of this, Chief, would you like to share some of the plans that we have with Flower, with Flower Mountain Fire Department and Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department, we're getting from this?
Listen, we want to have the closest relationship where honestly, folks can't tell who's who. When we pull up, we have a good relationship and it's going to get better. We're committed to that. I know Chief Wizzenhund is as well. We're going to train. We were out here, Chief, what day was it? I don't remember that.
9/11.
9/11. You, you would think I would remember that. But on 9/11, our ambulance crew came over. I instructed them to come over and train with the troops over here. We went through every compartment and kind of went over some of the equipment in there. All involved said it was a good session. Much was learned. There's mutual benefit to, to all of that. And the best part about it is relationships were strengthened. And so when we see somebody on a call, instead of that awkward moment, you know, while somebody's on the ground needing assistance and there's that awkward moment, that awkward moment's going away and, and we're going to continue to do it. We're going to do some fire training. We also have a fire training facility being constructed in Lewisville that we're in partnership with Highland Village and Lewisville on. And we're taking our Double Oak friends on a field trip with us. So. So, so there's going to be a lot of good things that come of this.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of intangible things that, that truly there's costs associated with it that they're extending to our Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department. You know, I'm, I'm not going to, it's, it's, it's their, it's Flower Mountain's world, it's Flower Mountain's numbers, but they were very, very courteous to share with me what some of these items do cost. And they're allowing our Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department to come in at no cost and take advantage of this training. That right there alone would take this, this cost and bump it up by $40,000, $50,000.
And we believe that makes them a stronger asset and a stronger part of this. The better they are, the better we are. It's good for everybody. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions, counsel?
No.
Just, just one. Will we get a formal contract beyond the email that showed us the schedule?
We have the formal contract. Our attorney has.
Okay, so.
Yes, it was sent over Monday, actually Monday morning. So it is in the attorney's hands being reviewed.
And it matches with the email?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
So item number 11, discussion, consideration and action on the addendum to the Double Oak EMS contract with Flower Mountain EMS. And that is for a step up program that enables a payment of $59,000 in 2024, $88,000 in 2025 and in 2026, $120,000. In 2024, two payments of $29,500 payable on 10-1 and 3-1. 2025, two payments of $44,000 payable on 10-1 and 3-1. And in 2026, quarterly payment of $30,000. So counsel, this is the, the offer on the table from Flower Mountain. It is a good offer and I ask if we have a motion to pass the EMS contract.
I move to approve the addendum to the Double Oak EMS contract with Flower Mountain EMS for the new contractor rates.
We have a motion by Mayor Protem Jonrad and a second by Councilperson Dietrich. Eileen, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Jonrad.
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
Ms. Wellen.
Aye.
Mr. Horton.
Aye.
Item, agenda item number 11, discussion, consideration and action on the addendum to the Double Oak EMS contract with Flower Mountain EMS for new contract. for new contract rates has passed. Eileen, I'll get you this information to add to the, to the, to the note. And I'm, I appreciate everything that the council has done. Chief, thank you, and I appreciate you taking time away tonight to come out here and, and, and talk and, and respond to our citizens. That is a true partner, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a good evening. All right. Now, we're going to step back to item number ten. Item number ten is more of a, an accounting item, and that is discussion and consideration in action on moving two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents from account thirty-six dash, or thirty-six hundred, street and drainage fund to account five-fourty, one-one-zero, current year road repairs. What this is, is to cover the cost of the mill and overlay project. And what's exciting about that is that we started out at like eight hundred thousand, and then the bid came in at, what, seven hundred thousand? And I remember sitting here while Mayor Emeritus was here, and he was scratching all the numbers out on the, on the table, or we're going to take money from this fund, and we're going to take money from this fund, and S L R F, and all this stuff, just to make sure we had enough money for mill and overlay. And then we got the final bill. And the final bill came in well under that. And we had all the money that we needed inside the road fund and some left over. But we did not have to go to S L R F funds in order to grab some money to pay for this. So, that's pretty exciting, and I think that shows us that packaging these opportunities together can get us a way better price. So, this is an accounting procedural vote in terms of moving the two-fifty-six, four-forty-four dot seventy-seven from the street and drainage fund to the current road repairs. We've already paid the bill. Yeah, so the bill's already paid. It's just accounting in nature. Are there any discussion by the council? Is there a motion?
I move that we transfer two-thousand-five-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty, wait, excuse me. I move that we transfer two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents from account three-six-oh-oh, street and drainage fund to account five-four-oh-one-one-oh, current year road repairs. I second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Wellen and a second by Mayor Protem. Eileen, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Shonrod?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
Mr. Horton?
Aye.
Agenda item number ten, discussion, consideration, and action on moving two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars seventy-seven cents from account thirty-six hundred, street and drainage fund to account five-four-zero, one-one-zero, current year road repairs passes. On that one? All right. We jump now to item number twelve, discussion, consideration, and action of an ordinance to require all salary increases awarded to the employees of the town of Double Oak to be included in the budgetary process and to be issued on merit determined by a performance evaluation process as stated in the policies of the personal handbook. We have a presentation by Mayor Protem Tony Shonrod. Oh, no.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just wanted to formalize the process here. Historically, it's not always been followed at the personal handbook, which was created for such intentions. So, just wanted to make it more concrete that when we do salary increases, they are based on merit and an employee review. Not been consistent in the past. This is a attempt to make it consistent and make sure that we are being responsible with your tax dollars and that wage increases are based on solid justification. I think it was a pretty straightforward ordinance. I entertain any questions from council?
Council, any discussion or question?
Are these? So, the, these reviews, I think in the book, it also states that it was brought up before that there, these reviews are on their anniversary date. Is this, does that need to be changed also? It would be yearly?
We talked about that last evening, that, that portion of the handbook needs to be adjusted to the new process. I don't think it necessarily needs to have that timing in this ordinance because there could be something stumbled across with the date. I, I don't know, I don't want to fizzle. But I do think that any increases should be tied to evaluation process and based on merit, like is common.
Most businesses will do a merit review or a performance review, usually within the first months or two of the start of the new year.
Yeah, yearly does.
Yes, because once merit is awarded, then if, say, for example, the increase doesn't happen for a month, then there's back pay to cover the merit. If you wait until August and then you do a review, that's a significant accounting for, uh, item that has to be accounted for and accrued for throughout the year. You don't want to do that. So, in this instance, the reviews of the, of all of the town administration will take place in the October, early November timeframe.
Yeah, we might. But that, that's not with it.
No, it's, it's making sure we adhere to a formalized process and not just verboes.
Other discussion, question? All right, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the ordinance, or that accept the ordinance to require all salary increases awarded to the employees of the town of Double Oak to be included in the budgetary process and to be issued on merit determination by a performance evaluation process as stated in the policies of the personnel handbook. I second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Wellen and a second by Mayor Protem Shonrod. Eileen, could you please call a vote?
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Mr. Hortoning?
Aye.
Ms. Shonrod?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
Agenda item number twelve, discussion, consideration, and action of an ordinance to require all salary increases awarded to the employees of the town of Double Oak to be included in the budgetary process and to be issued on merit determined by a performance evaluation process as stated in the policies of the personnel handbook passes. Agenda item number thirteen, this is a public hearing, this is the second public hearing, on the proposal to increase the total tax revenues on properties on the tax rule in a preceding tax year and to be considered a tax rate of point two-oh-six, two-two-five per one hundred dollars assessed valuation. That is the ceiling that this council could pass in terms of a property tax rate for the budget. The property tax rate that has been proposed in the budget is well less of this number. This is a procedural vote that had, a public hearing that has to do with the fact that we can never go above the rate. We can always go below the rate, which this council has done. So, this is the opening of a public hearing. It is now eight forty-eight. The public hearing on the tax rate is now open. It is now eight forty-nine. The public hearing is closed. Item number fourteen is a public hearing on the proposed budget for the fiscal year. But before we do the public hearing on the budget, we have some citizens that would like to come up and make comments, as well as I will be putting up on the screen, the budget. So, as, as there are questions from the citizens, as there may be questions from town administration, as there may be questions from the council, please bear with me as we work through the worksheet that's on the screen. And let me get that up on there, and then I will be calling our first citizen up to speak. Okay, now, this is a, I'll do my best to try and blow it up. It's not the easiest. So, if, if someone needs to look at it and walk up to it, I have no problem with that. Our first citizen that would like to speak on the budget this evening is Mayor Emeritus Mike Donnelly. Would you please come up to the podium and identify yourself? So, Mayor Emeritus, thank you for being here this evening. We miss you.
Well, good evening, Mike Donnelly, three zero two East Bruce Lane, Double Oak, seven five zero seven seven. Good evening, Mayor, council, staff, and neighbors. Thanks for the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm just going to simply read the email I sent today, kind of add to it just a little bit. Hello, Mayor and council. Plan to attend and speak at tonight's council meeting on the proposed budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I appreciate it that your last council meeting, the mayor and council worked. The proposed budget numbers that I had asked respectfully to ask to achieve a proposed budget that provided for minimum three percent raises for administration and Chief Rivas, seven percent for Assistant Chief Gaines, and the twelve percent for the remaining D O P officers. Again, I think those are correct pursuant to, I may have them wrong there, I'm not for sure. I know I thought the mayor and the council were happy that all this was achieved at that meeting and this budget process within the no new revenue rate. I was planning to send the mayor and the council a follow-up thank you email after tonight's meeting, after you concluded work and before your adoption formally on Monday, but then something happened that brought to my attention from a Wednesday night workshop. I heard that a budget workshop last night, council reduced the twelve percent for the remaining D O P D officers down to six point five percent. Again, if my number's off, I apologize. I have watched the budget workshop video now. I respectfully object to this proposed action. I respectfully ask the council mayor to revisit this tonight, and it's during your process here, so you're certainly able to do that, and restore the twelve percent increase to the remaining D O P officers. I think you reallocated, reallocated some of the dollars to crack sealing and roads. Again, if I'm wrong, I apologize. I think you have in the proposed budget fifty thousand for crack sealing and two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, again, I don't know exactly those numbers.
No, you're good.
Hard to see for roads in the proposed budget, and some dollars are still remaining in council contingency. Of course, you know, anything over fifty thousand dollars or more has to go out for bid. I think a good plan is to put forty thousand in the budget for crack sealing, and that'd be fine. And if you go over by a couple of thousand dollars in the actuals, you always have the funds to cover it if, if necessary. We don't usually do budget amendments on light items unless it's quite a bit over.
You're correct.
Same with the roads. You still have more than two-hundred thousand in the roads budget, plus another available dollars on the balance sheet. Those three lines seem to be the simplest to go back to tonight to achieve what I'd like to see done, going to the crack sealing, the roads, and the council contingency. To get the dollars needed to fund in the twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget to provide the previous proposed salary increases. Again, numbers, I think I understood. If I'm wrong, I apologize, y'all can correct them. Another three percent administration for the four and Chief Rivas, the seven percent as recommended by Rivas for Chief Gaines. I think that was to provide some separation or something. And then the twelve percent for the remaining D O P D officers as recommended. The funds are available. If council will simply go back and look at your numbers and rework them once again as you go through your process. You're nearing the end of this budget process. I know the proposed budget for twenty-three, twenty-four with the salary increases reinstalled that you previously had discussed is doable. I think it is well within a conservative scope and is supportive of all employees in their respective departments. Please, all of council and mayor, commit to this tonight. Let's leave tonight with everyone having a happy and feeling good about our town and the budget. I appreciate your processes, looking at various budgetary things, and willingness to revisit, hopefully restore the salary increases. I do want to touch a couple of fact items here, and Mayor, I'm trying to go fast.
You're fine.
As the mayor and council knows, there continues to be a shortage of police officers across the country, in Texas and Denton County. I know Mayor goes to lunches, he's talking to other chiefs, he hears from others. Departments are robbing from each other, you know? We were at a luncheon together, and Lewisville and Denton County, we're talking about officers switching from side to side there. At lunches and visiting with friends who are police chiefs and local law enforcement leaders throughout the county, they continue to talk about unfilled positions and losing L E Os to other agencies. Again, I know Mayor Johnson hears this as well. Many cities are at the no new revenue rate or higher and having to give still double-digit raises in police departments. We all live in Denton County. Our Commissioner's Court is working in partnership with our sheriff and our constables, and they are adopting the no new revenue rate. At the same time, they have realized, just as we do, it's hard to fill positions with quality police. Denton County is going to provide a fourteen percent increase to L E Os. I think that's fabulous. Double Oak is proposing twelve percent. I think it's all doable. My friends on Commissioner's Court, Sheriff Murphy, Constable Fletcher, the other constables, just like our chief and our mayor, have seen the need and the ability to provide the departments requested raises and still adopt no new revenue rate. It's a win-win, guys. Double Oak can also. The final points, Mayor, are our town has done some outstanding things over the last several years. You guys and y'all have been very much part of this, so has the previous councils. We've strengthened our town financials. We've lowered the tax rate, and that's been a plan for a long time, and we're doing it. You guys are doing it. We adopted a senior tax raise. We adopted a disabled tax raise. And last year, I think it was, we adopted the one percent town homestead exemption. Those are fabulous things, and we still have a strong balance sheet. We, Denton County, our state of Texas is very strong. Denton County is very strong. Double Oak is very strong. I know there's talk about recessions and that. We're not seeing that in Texas or Denton County. Double Oak can do this also. Again, I thank you all for your service and your reconsideration tonight.
Emeritus, thank you. Next on the list, Phyllis Meyerson. I, I just, I dropped down and just, I'm just pulling the names out.
Phyllis Meyerson, one thirty-three East View Court. I cannot say it any better than Mike said it. I was here last night when you lowered the rate from twelve percent to six and a half, and I would, you saw me on the video. I did not look happy. And y'all, I had some other things. Being cheap just for cheap's sake doesn't make any sense. Mike is right. You were very close to the number last night as you went through this. I believe, and I think you all know this, people should get paid what they deserve, and they need to stay up with inflation. Every one of you ran on your support for the police department. Let's see that tonight.
Thank you, Phyllis. Ken in Moffett?
Big print, but I still can't see it. Kevin Moffett, one forty, Shady Oaks Lane, Double Oak, Texas. Mr. Mayor and members of the council and citizens, from civics and government classes, we all learn that the basic functions of government classes, we all learn that the basic functions of government, no matter what level or where you are, are number one to craft and enforce the rules of society, that being us, Double Oak. The second most important function is to provide for the defense and protection of the citizens within its domain. Again, the Double Oak citizens, the Double Oak Police Department. I believe that it is your responsibility as elected town official to provide for the defense and common welfare of the citizens of Double Oak. I urge you to revisit the budget process and to go back to the twelve percent for the officer, if not more, and at least seven percent for Assistant Chief Gaines, and at least three percent for administrative staff and for our police chief. Everyone is searching for exemplary police officers. We do not need poachers in our town. When you do the math, all of you all are invisible. This is only a titans when you take into consideration the cost recruiting, background checking, all of the validation of credentials, the training for the new officers, plus, guess what? You incurred overtime for all those hours, at least forty hours a week, when you didn't have somebody to fill that list. Now, if you really want to know what happens when you don't have an adequately trained and funded police department, there are plenty of studies that you see every night on television, or you read about in the paper just yet. So I firmly believe that now is the time to put the budget money where your mouth is when you ran to office.
Thank you, Kenan. Thomas Meyer.
Thomas Meyer, one seventy Clark Lane, Double Oak, Texas. I guess I'm going to be the black sheep. I would like to just say a few words on the agenda line item. Last year, Double Oak Police received a nine percent increase. Then in twenty-one, twenty-two budget, most of the officers received a twenty-five thousand dollar kicker from the SLFRF. And twenty-two, twenty-three salaries were raised twenty point seven percent. Another question on this, twelve percent. Chief Rivas has asked again for twelve percent more, and our elected leaders considered and are proposing a six point five increase that would raise their rate better than the average police officer. This is still competitive for our little one-horse town that it doesn't even have a street light in or a stoplight in it and have a, you can say what you want to. I'm going to say my part. That's my, my ideal. And we've got a very low crime rate town. I was a police officer for twenty-five years. We don't have a town like Louisville. We don't have a town like Dallas. We don't have a town like Denton. We don't have that crime rate here. And my next question is, I think we're really heavy at the top on the police department. Why in the world do we need a police chief and an assistant police chief that won't get out of their office because they don't want to go to court? That bothers me. So there's two people here that they're being paid one eighty-something thousand dollars, another a hundred and four, and he's asking for another twelve percent? I don't agree with that, and I don't agree with the past mayor. So I'll get off of that, but I have another question. And why are the entire workforce working for the city of Double Oak don't have any time clock or anything that keeps track of their time, nor do we know when they come to work, when they go home, and when they're here? I think there needs to be some accounting for that. And then back to the fire department. That was a very, very good presentation from the Fire Mountain Police Chief, and I'm glad. Thank you, Mayor, for having our police chief here and the Fire Mountain Police Chief get together. Sounded really good to me. But it doesn't mean that we as residents of Double Oak don't appreciate our fire department and our police department because we do. We need them, and we're not against them. And I know that that whole council wants both of them to live in unity. We heard that tonight from the Fire Mountain Police, I mean, Fire Department, that they want to work with us. So I hope this thing is over. And I know that every council member here wants what we want. We need them both. So let's stop thinking the town council is not for the police department, and they're not for the fire department. There's only select people. They, this whole town council wants it, and I'm hoping and praying this war will be over because we need both police departments and both fire departments. And another question I've gotten, this is directed at Mark. Mark does our IT group here, work on our spam needs, and will that work keep us from being hacked like some of the cities in the United States? It can happen to Double Oak. What are we doing about that? And I know that's off the subject of the budget, but I just want to get everything in here. And I want to, I just heard y'all say the things that you were going to vote on tonight, but I'm asking the town council to consider these items I've spoken to, including accountability, job descriptions, and merit increases on jobs performed above and beyond the solid duty. And thank you very much for letting me talk.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Billy Garrett.
Garrett, one oh three West Caruth, Double Oak, seven five zero seven seven. Um, a couple of things. Um, I've heard during both budget workshops and at other council meetings, cast blame on previous councils for the situation that we're in with the police department. This crisis that police departments are having across the nation has really mounted in the last four or five years. So you really, I respectfully ask you to quit blaming other people who used to sit in your seats for actions that you're having to deal with. I sat on council. We started trying to work on it. You're trying to work on it. We're going to always continue to work on it. So quit casting blame on other citizens. It doesn't help. Secondly, Mayor, in the last two budget workshops, the one I was attending and the one I watched online last night, you continually state that we did not meet the no new revenue rate last year. The no new revenue rate for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three was point one nine eight oh six seven, which I believe is the number on your spreadsheet. And that's also what you put in the cross timbers because that in your campaign for mayor was that we achieved the no new revenue rate. So if you would be quit saying that we didn't get there because we didn't. Lastly, remember these little things that you flooded our mailboxes with? They all say that you support our first responders to keep Double Oak safe. What happens when our police officers quit? How long has it taken Chief Rivas to get our police department fully staffed again? It's taken a long time. We still have one out there. What happens when, as people have said, our officers get poached probably every day? We don't want poachers in our town. We don't want them to take our beloved police officers, but they're going to because you can tell, I can tell you from just other, my employer, people name their price right now, and they get it. So all of our officers could walk out that door quickly and go to other police departments, and none of us want that to happen. So do what you said when you ran for the town of Double Oak, not for your platform, not for your pack. We don't need those in this town. You should run for all the citizens and do what is right and keep our town safe and award the twelve percent raise that you had agreed to, but you changed last night. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Um, we're going to open the public hearing here. So we had people specifically sign up to talk about the budget, and I wanted to make sure that their voices were heard. So now, what we're going to do, the budget is up. So I think what I'd like to do is have you come up and talk. And your name, please.
Christina McIntyre, two ten Twin Lakes Drive. Sorry, what?
Um, no. Yeah, no, I, I, I just want to, because what we're going to do next, folks, is we're going to talk, the council is going to talk about the budget to, to take in all of the citizens' comments that were had. So I want to, I believe you want to make some of those comments, so.
Yeah.
Even though you hadn't signed up.
I'm sorry.
We're still Double Oak, and we still want to listen and take care of our citizens. So the public hearing will be taking place here in a few minutes. Christina McIntyre?
Yeah, Christina McIntyre, two ten Twin Lakes Drive. I love our police officers. Rivas, you know, I've known you for many years. I just want to add, I think the twelve percent is a little excessive. I think there's other concerns. Our neighborhood, for example, has got parts of our street caving in, and I think the money would be better reserved for that. We also live in the safest community I have ever known in my life. When I moved here eighteen years ago, Flower Mound was considered the safest in the country. I've lived in LA. I've lived downtown Boston. We don't have any parking lots or places to go where people can do more crime. I just don't see the need for the higher increases, especially since there was already the twenty-five thousand given and the other increases. And I just think over time, we can plan for that, but I think you're doing a great job, and I don't want to undercut the police department. I love them. I love Double Oak, but I don't think that we need to worry so much about the crime here and being protected. We are being well protected by the officers that we use on, and I thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Now, what I'd like to do before we do the public hearing, because I want to make sure that, that there's some discussion amongst the administration and amongst the council as it relates to the numbers. I think we've heard the, uh, the six of our town citizens in terms of what they had to say. So now what I'd like to do is, is kind of go to the council in terms of, well, first, I think I need to go to the administration first. So who would like to speak or have made comments from an administrative perspective?
All right. Yes, yes, Mayor, I have some comments. First of all, first of all, I want to say thank you for all the citizens in town for supporting, and even thank you for the citizens who, uh, who believe that the amount of this effort. Uh, Council, you have a hard job here, um, trying to decide what is best for the town. You know, you were voted in to make the decision for hard decisions for us. Um, so thank you from, from our department, the officers, and so forth. Uh, I was surprised yesterday hearing that the budget was cut to six and a half percent. I talked to Mr. Mayor last night, and we briefly spoke about it. Um, you know, we all have our opinions, right, of what we think it should be. I was tasked by the council, uh, to provide a budget, uh, bring it forward to the council, and what I, I was asked by the council, what I thought the appropriate amount of salary should be for, for our officers. And going back to the salary survey that was, um, uh, provided to you, I believe it was a twelve percent increase to keep us competitive to surrounding agencies, uh, to be able to retain the, the officers that we currently have. Um, as you know, it is difficult nowadays to find these officers. We went through several officers who applied with us, and we had to turn down several of them. Fortunately, I am at full staff, and I would like to keep it at full staff. Uh, the officers do appreciate what y'all have done, uh, with six point five percent, but everybody still believes that we need to be competitive to, with, uh, other agencies. Uh, thank you, sir, for your years of service as a law enforcement. Uh, your times were different than what our time is right now. Uh, citizens believe that nothing happens. There's no crime in Double Oak. Uh, but a part of that is because you have a law enforcement presence. We are here to protect you. We're out here making traffic stops, and we're making sure that we are seen by these criminals and let them know that, yes, Double Oak does have a police department. Don't go there. When they see a patrol car with lights out there, they'd rather go somewhere else. You say nothing happens. Uh, you know, I, I've been here going almost on eighteen years, and I can remember some of the stuff that I have come across, uh, and just, not just here in Double Oak, but us as a police department responding to other agencies, assisting them with whatever type of calls that they are. Uh, our officers have seen things that, uh, most people never see. Uh, just off the top of my head, Officer Friend who went in here, got dispatched to a call just outside our town, across the street from the church, where a boyfriend shot his girlfriend, uh, several times in the head. He was the first officer on scene, and the thing he can remember is the blood coming out of her head and filling up that Sonic cup that was in her car. That's something he'll never forget. Uh, officers responding to a drowning child. Officers attempting to save this child's life, and the child died in his hand. Us responding to a barricaded person, uh, and all our staff sitting there, laying out there, waiting for a county to arrive to assist us with SWAT with the subject who's shot at his wife and shot outside the house going back to the residence. So you can't tell me that nothing happens. You may not know what happened, but it happened. We're out there. We have had a rash of burglaries, uh, here in Double Oak where a crew out of Fort Worth, Dallas came and burglarized hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of items from people's homes. They broke into four or five homes, and it was Double Oak who found them. We did that job. Uh, we had individual drug addicts that come here and break into somebody's house. We took care of that. So there's more that goes on than anybody knows here. I'm sure Assistant Chief Gaines can, can talk about those incidents that have happened. I personally have to chase down registered sex offenders who had warrants and had to arrest them in Mr. Donnelly's neighborhood. So there's more things that happen out there. So it, it kind of gets frustrating when, when we do hear that nothing happens in Double Oak because it does. And not only does it happen in Double Oak, it's around us. Um, our presence here is very important. Uh, so that's why I believe that the increase should be at twelve percent. I know, uh, council member, I believe, last night, uh, mentioned something about Bartonville, keeping up with Bartonville. I think he had mentioned something like that. I can't remember exactly what he said.
I was looking on here just to find out where everybody else was along here. That's what I, my question was.
And he said kind of keep compatible with, with Bartonville or something like that. So yes, this morning, I went over to Bartonville to ask them what, what was their pay increase going to be for next year? And I talked to the, the city manager, uh, knew Mayor pretty well, and he said they've discussed stuff of, uh, police and other stuff, but they're increasing their salary sixteen percent, uh, is what they, what they passed. And now they're at, uh, they're starting pay that seventy-four thousand, um, and they're also on an eighty-four hour pay period. But the difference in that is that they get overtime anything after eighty hours. Here in Double Oak, they don't pay overtime until after eighty-five point five hours. Uh, so, yeah, it's hard to compare us to other agencies. Uh, so, yeah, uh, it's hard to compare us to other agencies, other departments, because it's hard to compare apples to apples and say, yeah, this is what we do. Uh, as Mayor pointed out, it, it is, we're competing with all these other agencies, unfortunately. And it is, um, hard to recruit and find people to come work for you. I know that has been said, uh, we need to, um, uh, show other recruits what we have to offer. It's kind of hard to show what we have to offer when we are a small town, when we have no advancement in, in, uh, rank, we have no specialized units like, like other departments. We don't have K-9 units, we don't have drug units, or we don't have, uh, traffic units and so forth. So what we're stuck with is providing a good atmosphere for officers to come work, a good pay, competitive pay and benefits. Uh, and that's what I'm trying to do. And one of the things that we just said, that we got $25,000, uh, uh, premium pay. Well, that, that wasn't everybody that's here, sir, uh, or ma'am. Uh, it, it, it's not that. And one of the things that the, uh, feds say, that you cannot use that against employees to say, okay, you got 25,000, so you're not going to get a raise because you got this 25,000. I think that was speculated in there, not to do that, but it seems that, that, that's what we're doing. You know, I, I can sit here and just explain again everything that I talked to and the reason about what the pay increase is for. I think it's very important that, that we do retain our officers because we don't want to lose an officer and have to go back and hire a new officer, train them and so forth, because that costs money. Uh, I want to give Assistant Chief a chance to speak about, uh, what our officers, how important our officers are and why we believe it is important to give these raises, raises to these officers. Assistant Chief?
Okay, one, one second. I'm keeping it to 54. Not at this time. All right. I'm just, I'm just writing, uh, because we're being fair tonight, but we're not keeping to the three minute thing. This is important to all of you, it's important to the chiefs and such. I realize it's going to drive the meeting a little bit long, but you know what? So what? Okay? Chief, Assistant Chief, please.
First of all, I'd like to say, the chief and I don't sit in our office all day long. We are in our office a lot because we're rewriting policy, we are covering the budget and we are working. Where were you at 3:00 Monday night, Tuesday morning? I was patrolling the neighborhood all night long. I'm not sitting in my office, I'm covering my officers, I'm making sure they're getting trained, we're getting quality officers, that's why we're turning down the officer, because we want you to have a quality officer to work for you. That's why we have a safe city. Our officers are out here and they are quality officers. We're getting them more training, we're working with agencies around us to get them free training so that it's saving monies for us. And these officers don't complain. You ask them to do something, they're out here doing it. Y'all, y'all come out here, you request, um, officers to work these speed roads that are Simmons, King's, Theater Crest, they go out there and work them. You may not see them because you not, you may not see them out there because you don't see them at the time you're out there. But these officers are out there and all you have to do is ask them. And you go out there and talk to these officers and they do love this town, but at this time, they're starting to feel a little kicked down at the moment. And we're out there fighting for these guys because we have a good family we built here for Double Oak residents. And we're getting out there and we're training them and we're going to make sure that we have quality officers that work for us.
Thank you.
Mayor, one more thing, if you don't mind?
Yeah, one more thing, sorry. There's a method to my man.
Again, I want to say thank you, regardless of what happens tonight, uh, we are dedicated to working for this town and we still have a mission, uh, to, to complete. And, uh, we are here to do our job. And again, thank you, council, for, for considering this and thank you for what y'all done. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. So the method to my madness is, got, uh, 11, 15, 17, 19. So we've got about 29, almost 32 minutes of comments, citizen comments, administrative comments. Um, from what I could tell, mostly around the six and a half percent versus the 12%. Did I get that right, citizen? Okay? Whether you're for or against it, just want to make sure we confirm that. Counsel, did I get that right? I didn't hear a lot of other things? Chiefs? So what I'd like to do now, before we do the public hearing, and when we have the public hearings, it is a public hearing, you didn't have to write your name down, you didn't have to do anything. That's why I thought it was important for you to be heard before we go to this next step. And the next step is now, I'm going to turn it over to the council. And yes, I'm going to keep time on that. As it relates to the top item that was addressed or that brought to the attention of this council tonight, is the six and a half or 12%. Before we go there, are there any other budget items that you think we should discuss that we worked on last night? Or are we good with the way it sits? And we need to address this particular item, which will have a waterfall effect in terms of if it was to pass, if it was to stay the same, if it was to increase, then we've got to move some monies around. All right? But before we go there, is there anything else in the budget that you came here tonight, that you wanted to discuss that we didn't discuss last night? Because I want to expedite this the best we can. Nope? Okay? So now we're going to talk about, let me get down to that line item, please. And that would be line item, we are talking about the officer, police officer's salary, line item 184 on the spreadsheet. It is account 550254, police officer's salary. It is currently, the numbers that are currently in there are reflective of, if you look at the top, and I'm sorry, it's hard to see, but it is a six and a half percent increase, which comes to 54689620. So counsel, I'm now opening the discussion to you. So, um, Mark, would you like to go first? Is there any comments, questions, uh, comments?
I guess the, the six and a half percent isn't, you know, because of the new resi, of course, the resolution and clarification, um, earlier.
I understand.
There isn't, you know, they can get from anywhere from zero to probably 12, 13, 14%. Depending on what the, uh, the review is.
Correct.
Everything is based on the reviews. Those are just funds that are available, correct?
That is correct.
And one of the questions that, uh, old mayor, ex-mayor, right? What do we call them?
Mayor Emeritus.
Mr. Donnelly. The, the one thing that he mentioned was, uh, an eye buck, or is there anything? That over a certain amount, something has to go out for a bid. And so I'm not sure what that referred to, if I know that's in the.
It was for the crack seal. So we allotted 50,000, if we were going to spend 50,000 or more on crack seal, we would have to get multiple bids for that. It's, it just coincides with the fact that that is a number that would have to require extra bids. So we, we kind of got there, we just got there. Okay?
Okay, so maybe that needs to be corrected for me.
Well, that's based on bid, so the budget is a number, it's a, it's a guidance number.
Correct.
Yeah, we just, we, we don't have to spend that much for it, we just.
That is correct.
But if we give the 50,000, if everything, do all of that at one time, then it has to be a bid. Okay? That's correct. But if you don't do it at one time, it doesn't have to. Yeah?
Right.
Okay. That's all I have for this.
Okay. Uh, who would like to go next? Sorry that I picked on you.
I can go.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
So let me start off saying, this council, I do believe, does support.
Yeah.
Oh, I got a ring. Oh, I do believe this council does support the fire department and the police department. Um, we did take your reasoned information into consideration and in, as you watched the video last night, we did deliberate about what other cities did. And we moved our officers up four slots with our proposal of 6.5%. But I see, and I'll speak for myself, um, I see myself serving the entire community of resident, uh, residents of Double Oak and all departments. And I have lived in this town for nearly 28 years and I have seen our roads decay and minimal effort put towards that. And in most recent years, a lot of effort poured towards our first responders, which is good. But there needs to be balance and we have residents calling out for work on their roads. And we see it with the two years of drought, they are taking a toll. I also get data, today was, my phone was blowing up with data. I do think, um, that we support, and I looked up the definitions, thinking I'm, has been missing something on what support means. It's not just financial, it's holding up and propping up our officers, which you see on social media, which you see when council accolades to your department often, um, helping, aiding, assisting, giving money, maintenance. We support with the uniforms, with the equipment, with the training. Ask you what your budget needs were for this year. We wanted to make sure we covered all of that. We are excited that you have found another officer. This town still has 24/7 coverage. This council has not stopped that. Um, you have great working conditions here. I know you don't like me comparing you to other cities, but we are low crimes. We don't, we don't experience the crime in the statistics that are out there of other cities. You have your occasions and I'm, I'm sorry for any officer that has experienced such a terrible sight on their call. It's part of the job and we want you to have the resources for mental health to get through those tragedies. So we want to support the, uh, the police department that, but we want good leadership for it. We have supported your department through the losses that you've suffered. They were tragic and sad and we've tried to encourage the department to go on. So support is not just financial and money is not an, uh, what does my husband say? It's not a satisfier, it is a dissatisfier. We will be chasing this forever. The town has other large expenses coming at it in the next three years. Prime example is the ambulatory service, which is also a very needed service for our town and our community. Um, I don't believe that we should take the meager senior citizen increase that the government gave them and give it to the police department. They, it may not be fixed, but it's fixed and it's limited and they don't have the resources to go out and get jobs. So I'm okay at a six and a half percent. I think that's a good rate. I think it pockets you competitively with like sound towns. I think the other things to consider about being employee of our town are worthy considerations to stay. You got a great community, you got great benefits. The salary's up there. It might not be a, a king's ransom, but it's up there and it's good. And it's safe conditions relatively. It is, when you compare to Oak Cliff, Arlington, Little Elm, Northlake. We're paying your officers more than Northlake and Northlake is growing and they have apartments and they have infrastructure that leads to crime, leads to people coming in, leads to more drastic accident recovery. I mean, I don't want to pretend I know everything about your job, um, and I appreciate what you guys do there and I want to give you resources to do the job for speeding tickets and stop sign runners and investigate burglaries and taping of houses and egging them. I want, I want to do that, but I don't think that this council's been unfair. And, uh, what was the statement made earlier tonight? That you are in peril? Because I looked at the definition of peril, I'm sorry, this police department is not in a state of peril with this council. So, sorry, just wanted, we, I had the opportunity to just stand and throw it in.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, Pat or Mike? Should I flip a coin?
I can, I can go next, too.
Thank you.
So I was, I did not have the sheet in front of me is why I was asking where Bartonville was, but I was asking where we fell within all of these different, uh, cost structures that we've seen, that we've been given by the chief. And we were looking at it going Pilot Point, Justin, Hickory Creek, Sanger, Crum, Bartonville, Corrent, Lake Dallas, Krugerville, Highland Village, Oak Point, Northlake, when we were looking at the 6.5 or 7, or what we were trying to decide on what the right number was within that to get the budget where we felt it needed to be. And also, as, uh, defeating our mayor Protem, Sean Rad said, look at how we could increase some of the money that we had for the roads. Again, because we do know that that's a huge problem right now, especially with our, that we've been losing a lot of dips and things that are happening to some of these roads that we need to take care of. Um, that's why we were talking about that, because we wanted to find a way to be somewhere in here, but we don't think we can do it the 12%. But we don't want to be at the bottom anymore. That's why we were looking at that and talking about that. So that's, I did not have the sheet in front of me, actually, is why I was asking that question of the others that had the sheet in front of them. So we are concerned about where we are. We looked at it, we thought about it, it was, we talked about it for quite a while, actually, on that, trying to figure out what we felt was the highest we could go and where we could land and still be up where we were competitive.
Pat? Thank you. Mike?
So not just talking about the 12% and the six and a half, the, the 3% we didn't touch, the 7% we didn't touch. Um, and, you know, there's been talk today about the idea that, uh, inflation and recession and whatever haven't hit Double Oak, but, um, they've hit my wife's business, they've hit my business. Um, and, um, I guarantee you, uh, neither one of us are seeing a 12% increase in our money. So, um, I think that the, the idea that we don't support the Double Oak Police Department is a misnomer, um, because if we didn't, we'd drop it to zero or we'd move it backwards or we'd do something other than give it a six and a half percent raise. And I'm sorry if people feel that we aren't supporting them, but, um, I, I think as, as a town council, we are. And I agree with what Connie has said as far as other benefits and items along that line. So, um, yeah, I, I will stay at the 6.5.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, please come up? Yes, okay.
Jackie Barrow, 200 Oakview Drive. Just a couple of comments. Connie, you had mentioned that property taxes were going to increase and seniors were going to have to go out and get jobs to pay for it, when in actuality, most seniors in Double Oak live in homes that are homesteaded and their property taxes are frozen. The other comment that I will have is actually a question, and I don't know who has the answer to it, is this six and a half or 12% increase, how much in actual money is that going to increase on my property taxes? Because I know last year, there was a big stink about it and when we actually looked at the numbers, it was like $48. And I could live with giving the police department $48 so I can be assured that my police department is taken care of. This is a need for the town. We need to take care of them so they can be here to take care of us.
Thank you. Go ahead, counsel.
I just want to.
Please talk one at a time.
Your comment was not what I said. I did reference senior citizens. They did receive a social security is, uh, increase of about 9.6%. I re, I did not reference property taxes. I said that they didn't need to give their increase to the police department. They needed to survive because they cannot go get secondary jobs to pay any, any cost of living expenses. So that is where, where my marks were, not what you tried to quote. So that is where, where my marks were, not what you tried to quote.
So, so, thank you. So what I would like to do now, um, we've heard from the council, we've heard from the administration, we've heard from citizens. So I'm going to ask the council, oh, I'm sorry, we haven't heard from the mayor. Okay, they only give me two. Um, merit is a extremely tough, uh, conversation, whether in the private sector or in the public sector. Um, I happen to, to, to lead a manufacturing company and merit is typically, merit and, and money don't mix. They can mix, but in many times they don't mix because typically you budget a certain amount of money. And then you sit down and review all the good attributes and the, and the attributes that need coaching up with each and every, uh, one of your employees. In my case, it's associates and in this case, it's the town employees. And, and those are all, uh, subjective in nature. They're subjective in nature because it's the, it's the leader, it's up to the leader to decide the merit, to decide what they do with the pool of money that's provided to the merit or to the employee or the associate or the town employee. Point being is that these are budgeted dollars that are not guaranteed to anyone. This is a pool of money called merit to which, in the case of Double Oak, here's how the town org chart works. The mayor has two, three direct reports. Town secretary, public works, chief of police. The town secretary has assistant town secretary, IT, did I forget anybody? No. The chief of police has the assistant chief and nine soon to be ten or? Six total, okay, I'm sorry. So what happens now, regardless of whether it's six and a half percent, whether it's twelve percent, whether it's three percent, whether it's seven percent. The point is that these pools of money that get approved through this process become a part of the review process. Someone's done a good job, they might get a little more. If someone's done not so good a job, they might get a little less. I always tell my, uh, executive team, I mean, if you're, if you're not going to spend it all, give it back to me. I'll be more than happy to take it. Um, but it usually doesn't work out that way. And so we sit here and we hear twelve percent, three percent, seven percent. There's not a guarantee that every officer is going to get twelve percent. I'm not going to speak for the chief. There's not a guarantee that every administration is going to get three percent. It's all going to come down to the performance that they have done in the previous year based upon the criteria set in the review process. Okay? So we can sit up here all day long, we can debate as a council, we should give them six and a half, we should give them twelve, we could give them whatever. The point is, is that the leadership in this town, doing the right thing by the employees with the right instrument, the performance review, will decide how much money is spent and to whom of the pool of money. So council, here's what I'm, I'm saying to you, all right? Does it matter if it's six percent or twelve percent? As long as we put a, a performance review out, then we trust our leadership to do the right thing, evaluate properly, adjust accordingly. Administration, do we do the same thing here? That you're going to take and really take good consideration as to who's done well or who's done not? As the mayor, I'm going to take that very seriously. And as we go through the process, the chief is going to have to come back to me and explain why, how and what and who deserved what. And I'm sure that may be the, I, I'm not sure if assistant chief, if you're doing some of the reviews, that's going to flow that way. I'm going to come back to Eileen and say, Eileen, talk to me about the criteria used to give that money, uh, from a merit perspective. I'm going to do the same thing when I meet with Eileen and Randall and the chief. All right? This is a pool of money that does not have to be all spent. And so my point being council, my point being citizens is that it's a budget, it's a number. Nobody gets it all. Nobody feels like they earn it all. Nobody's promised it all. But if they've done a hell of a job throughout the year, they deserve to get it. So I guess what I'm asking, and this is, this is kind of tough because this is government and we got a lot of crazy crap going on in Double Oak, use my language. I'm asking you to trust the leadership of the town to do the right thing for the pool of money that we put out for merit. If you'll do that, we may all be surprised. Can I discuss each and every one of those HR conversations that I have with Eileen, with Randall and chief? No, I cannot. It's HR related. But as the mayor of the town, the chief can tell me and talk to me about why and what and how he did what he did. And I will hold him accountable for that, just as I will hold Eileen accountable for that. So I guess in closing, oh, wow, I went a little, in closing, the point being council, the point being citizen. Should we really be sitting here arguing over who gets what and where, when what we're doing is creating a pool of budget? Let me show you one number. Here's, here's what's crazy about this whole thing. Our budget for last year was two point two seven mil, two, two, two million, two hundred and seventy two million dollars. We're projected the year finished at two million, one hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars. Three hundred and thirty four dollars, three hundred and thirty four thousand surplus, okay? Yeah, there's money there. There's a lot of money left on the table from last year, which we're going to use to shore up our balance funds and things like that. And by the way, don't quote me on three thirty four because we have to finish out the year with all week adjustments after that. But we are going to have a surplus, all right? But more importantly is we're going, we're, we're taking a new way of thinking. You heard the ordinance that was passed tonight. They're holding the mayor accountable, they're holding all of the leaders accountable to do the right thing with a budget, or excuse me, a merit review. So my ask to the council, my ask to the citizens, is there some middle ground we can go to? Or is there trust that we can gain by doing this? And I'm going to ask the council to debate this first in case we have to make any changes here before I open the public hearing. So I apologize for taking seven minutes, but I think it's important that I shared that with you. So council, where are we at with this number?
I'm holding the six point five.
Mayor, you're very eloquent and you tried to persuade and that's a good quality in you. But I also hear from constituents who did not come here tonight, but did text, email, call. They're concerned about the trajectory of these large increases year after year. We have large expenses coming at us again, the ambulatory, the ambulatory services that we have to offer to our town. Um, we don't know our sales tax. We were, we've spent a lot of time talking about the sales tax. We don't know how that'll come in this year. Um, we have roads and they are going to suffer greatly with two years of drought like we've had. They're significant. I'm sure Randall could testify to that. We probably should be paying more money than the meager two hundred and nine dol, nine thousand dollars we gave to that budget. Um, that's directly impacts our residents too, especially those who are building million dollar properties in our town. And they have a terrible road right in front of their house. That's not helping the property values of their house. So I think we deliberately deliberated a lot last night. I think we made sense. And so I appreciate your impassioned speech, but I'm not moving off the six percent, six point five either.
Thank you. Other item, other discussion, excuse me?
And I think part of what we discussed last night also is that money that we're rolling, we still have the, um, obligation, a potential obligation for, um, King's Road. We still have the potential obligation for what's going to come out of this, uh, drainage study. We have some other things that we will need that money for as well. That was part of our concern also. Oh, and the Wakeville.
The Wakeville question mark. That we don't know what we're on.
Not knowing what's going to happen there now, but it's going to litigation. So we have some potential things that are going to.
Which are all very important factors for council to consider with the budget of this town.
Yeah, those were part of what we, why we, why we got onto that subject, I believe, in the first place.
Mark or Mike, anything? If not, I'm going to open up the public hearing. I do have to ask this, we are running late folks, we've had a lot of good conversation, the, uh, the council, uh, to about eighteen minutes. So I am going to limit the public hearing comments to two minutes. If you've already had, spoke your piece, you can still come up and speak again. Nothing keeps you from that. It is now, yeah, yes. Um, not for the public. Um, it is nine fifty one, we're going to do a five minute recess. I expect probably about twenty minutes of, but it's. But the reality is. Need a right hand? Need a right hand? Cat's dog on the way, we'll get you. I got ring back up there. Jacked them out by day. Trying to get as close as we can, but it's still, that's not as a deck science. Yeah, no, yep, no, you got it right.
In fifteen days.
So we have, uh, we got nine more days. This was reflective of fifteen days. This was as of last Friday. All right.
And I just don't have that problem.
It is now nine fifty eight. We're going to resume the meeting. And as I had stated prior to the, um, to the break, um, it is now time to open the public hearing number two on the proposed budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. We've had good, healthy conversation, um, and I appreciate all of that from everyone. Um, during the public hearing, because I'm not sure how many people we have coming, I am going to, uh, limit it to two minutes. Um, so what I'd like you to do is when I open the public hearing, you'll come up, you'll state your name and your address, just like you normally do, and you will, um, go ahead and be heard. Is that fair statement, Mayor Emeritus? Did I say that right? You've al, you already.
You already went, I will.
All right, so please, Mayor Emeritus, you are on the clock. Oh, sorry. No, I, I did, never mind, I didn't. I opened the break. It is now nine fifty nine fourteen, public hearing number two is now open.
Good evening again, Mike Donley, three O two, East Street Lane, Double Oak, seven thousand, here at seven seven. Mayor and council, uh, just wanted to address you in the public hearing. Totally agree with what the mayor said earlier about merit raises. Uh, this way the town has always done it. What, if I understood him right, and I totally agree with this, and this is what past councils have done. It's council's job to hear from the department leaders, or from your mayor, what they think is best for the operations of the town and then allocate the dollars. Uh, mayor, I don't want to put words in your mouth. I, if I misspeak about what you said or meant, uh, correct me, but, um, past councils and this council being asked to allocate the funding for the merit raises in the appropriate. uh, past councils and this council being asked to allocate the funding for the merit raises in appropriate lines. Uh, currently looking at three percent across the administration and chief, seven percent for chief games, and look to allocate, uh, up to twelve to twelve percent funding in the officers line item. So, uh, the mayor's correct, uh, the reviews will be done. He does department heads, the department heads do the other staff members, team members, and that's how it works. Maybe you have some dollars left over, maybe you don't. It's council's job to decide tonight, in this case, uh, where do you want to put those funds, that merit funds? If you want to fund them at six percent, seven percent, three percent, or twelve percent? Um, Mayor, I, I, I meant to ask earlier, and I did hear some comments during the break. Some people are curious about what is the dollar difference between the five percent, or six point five percent up to the five point five percent.
I'm going to, I'm gonna stop the clock on you.
Well, I used all my time, I, I'm done.
No, 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 you, I wanna, no, you don't get to him.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna go ahead and make the adjustment here, and then I'm gonna scroll down to the bottom one, okay? What's that? We are balanced. Right here.
It's about unbalanced.
Um, at times I'm imbalanced. All right, all right, went past it. So, you wanna come up here? There you go. I go slow doing this because there's a lot of work in the spreadsheet, and I don't want to screw something up. All right? Thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. Now, let me, let me preface this. When you, when you make a change in this spreadsheet, Billy, correct me if I'm wrong, when you make a change with an increase, it impacts FICA, their TMRS. There's multiple, there's a very complicated formula in here, so it isn't just the salary that changes here, it's a whole bunch of other line items that have to be accounted for. So, um, Mayor Meredith, it's basically thirty-three thousand dollars.
And, and I'll just finish up with, uh, I've been quite impressed with your formulas, and I, I think.
They're Billy's too.
Include the, the FICAs and all when you're making your changes, I think, and also, that's all I ask, is, is follow the mayor's direction, I think he was giving this evening earlier. I'd like to see you fund these at twelve percent, and then the others that's been talked about. Uh, I think it is doable, and then let the mayor and the department heads work on this. Maybe they, they give it out, maybe they allocate less than. Uh, if they do, at the end of the day, later in the budget year, you might be able to amend and reuse those dollars somewhere else, but trust the mayor on this, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Meredith. Next person up. You should state your name and your address.
Donna Gillum, two two one, Wakeston Extension. Um, that's what I did want to know, is what was the amount of money that we were talking about? If we technically have an excess this year of three hundred thousand dollars, and it's gonna be thirty-three to forty for additional funds if they're awarded based on a merit system. I do believe that the police department, if you people want to make sure that we live in a safe town for the rest of your life, or for the rest of the time that you're living here, you want to make sure that you do have police presence. Once we not, stop paying our police department a fair wage compared to the other people, don't give me the look, Connie, you just did. Um, if you don't pay people, they will leave, because why bother to stay? They don't live here by a lot of people's standards, they're always, people are saying, uh, Double Oak is too rich for my blood, I can't afford to live in that town. But if you want them to work here, you do need to make sure that you are competitively paying them so they will want to stay. Because once the police department start getting down to bare bones because nobody wants to work here, those new million-dollar homes are not gonna be built bec- and/or they're gonna get robbed. And who wants to live in an unsafe area? I know I don't. Flower mounds building up all around us, it's gonna be nothing but a zillion and one people. If you want, we're gonna see an uptick in crime, we're gonna see an uptick in all of our traffic stuff. We want to increase some revenue to help fund the police, write some more tickets, get more patrol officers out there, write the tickets. We get a lot of money now supposedly because of the hail damage on the roofing, not a lot, but you know what I mean? There's other incomes that can come in, um, and the other thing, only because of course I'm still at sticker shock on our ambulance service, that's a fifty percent increase now. Next year, it goes up even more, so we're having a, what, one, two, three? Next year, and then the following, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for one year's worth of ambulance service when we only give the fire department a hundred thousand. So if you want to talk about a lot of money disappearing out of our budget, that was huge. I'm just over sticker shock on that, is still amazing. But that's it, I still think we need to fund our department allowing, and again, just like Mike said, is let the bosses handle what the merit raise would be. But you want to make sure that your people are competitive, is you want them to continue to protect us.
Thank you, Donna. Yes, um, it's public hearing, so please.
Dave Hillier, uh, one seven zero, Prairie Hill Drive, Level of Texas. Um, when I say that council doesn't support the police, I, I will, I'll repeat that. You, when the police chief wasn't here, you reduced the, uh, amount of money that you had previously agreed to, twelve percent to six percent. That's, that's, that's the support item in my, basically, you ended up with a, you, you defunded the police to fill cracks in the road, and you, and you had a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar surplus. I don't know how, in con- good conscience, you can do that. When the police chief asked for twelve percent, he didn't do that because he's frivolous, he went out and he looked, and he determined that that's what it took, put him in the middle of the range to hire police officers. You hire professionals, you asked him his opinion, and he gave it to you, and then you undercut it, to fill cracks in the road, and you got a million dollars in your bank account, so something's wrong.
Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Ray, I live at one seven zero Whistling Duck, Double Oak, Texas, seven five zero, seven seven. Um, Chief, could you clarify for me the number of officers for the twelve percent, was that six or ten? Six. So if you take the line item difference, and just the one, not the trickle down, right? Roughly twenty-eight thousand, then that gives our chief the ability, based on merit, of only four thousand, seven hundred dollars per those six officers, wa- want that much per officer if they have the merit that would support the additional raise, is some, something to think about. You're talking about four thousand, seven hundred dollars that you're not allowing the chief to have discretion over, think about that.
Thank you. It is now ten oh nine, the public hearing is closed. Council, item number fifteen is discussion, consideration, and action on an ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year budget. The budget can still have adjustments to it before we move to any sort of motion. So, is there any other adjustments? Uh, discussion, and we're, we're now in a phase of, the work is here. Will it be the final? So I'm gonna open it up real quick to any sort of council discussion. Based upon what we've heard through the public hearings, and all the other, uh, citizen comments, administration comment, council comment. Mark?
So in the past budgets, let me go back there, how much was left over in those budgets, from the amount that they put into it? So, in the police line, they added twelve percent, whatever, twenty percent, or whatever it was, how much money was left over easier than that?
It.
You run the little background? Does that show up?
With that, they say it's left over, but was there any leftover produced?
So the, the answer would be yes, because we were never at full staff. I'm sorry, I went too far, folks, sorry, sorry, sorry. So if you look at the, um, police officer salary, twenty twenty-three, we budgeted five thirteen.
But I guess, I guess the answer there is, is because they weren't fully staffed.
That is correct, so the, the pool of money is there, but they, but we didn't use it all, in fact, we actually stole some money from the chief here this year.
Well, we just reallocated it in his budget.
But we reallocated it and gave it back, correct? All right, and the budget for this year. So, so, and, and we have the capability to do things like that in the town, just because it's a line item, one, one gets too, too heavy, one gets too light, we have the ability, the council, um, working with, um, our administration to make those types of adjustments, if we need to.
And so, the question would be, also, so now you're fully staffed and you have sick off, okay?
Yes, sir.
So, but that means that, because your new officer won't be getting a raise, because he's already done his state salary, so now we're, that money's spread across five of them.
Correct. Correct.
Then you have more to play with, essentially, in the six man. I just, now, I want to make sure other council members understand this too, we've been meeting, 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 it's a process. So at one point in time, the twelve was plugged in to see what happened, and then we looked at the other areas of the town budget, and played with numbers there too.
That's what I was gonna say, we've been changing things all throughout, but it wasn't an agreed upon, defined, for sure.
Exactly.
There was never a gr- tonight is our first chance at agreeing upon what the budget would be. There was never a promise made, there was never anything committed to, it, they were just numbers that were moved.
Exactly, because it's a process.
Correct. Just as it is right now, um, we could move quickly to a vote, but I wanted to make sure that we had one last opportunity to think through and see what we need to do here or not.
Right, so the mentality of we're taking away something we never gave in the first place, that's misrepresenting, right?
And so what, what I showed at six point five as an increase is four thousand, thirty dollars per person, potentially.
As the increase amounts?
I was doing this off of this sheet that the chief gave us, actually, for the five people, that would be for the five people. Um, we'd have to go back up and put it up there, and I showed a higher one as we went up and up and up, because I, we looked at, we looked at six point five, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, what each of those increases meant to this starting salary, actually, is what we were going on the other night. Um, and that's the increase, at six point five percent, that starting salary would increase by four thousand, thirty dollars. If it's seven percent, four thousand, three hundred and forty, so that's what we were looking at, we know that there are officers that are higher than that, there are officers who are lower than that, so a percentage of those different ones would be higher or lower, depending on what they are.
Yes, sir. Any other comments or considerations before?
So, I just want to make sure we're that we need to take, there, there's not, the council doesn't want to go up to twelve percent, and we're gonna move it, we'll keep it at six point five.
That's a question for the council.
Yeah, we put the twelve in there to show.
To show that difference.
That was, right.
That's, it was a demonstration and not a promise.
So, before we can make a motion to approve, do we need to get back to the zero number?
Yeah, that would be up to the council to tell me what to do with this number.
I say move that number to six point five.
I agree.
One agrees.
We've gone back and forth on it, I think we've, we could.
You gotta say you agree or don't agree.
Could you just say again what you showed for the beginning salary with the six point five percent?
Six point five percent, that's a four thousand, thirty dollar increase.
From what the current starting pay rate is.
From what current starting salary, that's the starting pay, not, I don't think this is normal life, I think this is the normal life, when it's the eighty hour, not what the actual one would be, right? Is that on yours? Yeah, it's, it's normal. Well, that's per person, that's, that's just taking the sixty-two thousand dollars, six point five percent.
But they would get that new starting rate.
They, they would get the new starting rate.
The sixty-six. So it's kind, the raise is kind of built in now to the starting salary, because we're increasing it? Am I right?
Yeah, I guess I'm.
Am I interpreting that right?
This money difference in here would be for their merit increase.
Well, it, it all goes together, because this is all the salaries and everything that we pay to the, to the police officer.
Yeah, it is.
That's all put together.
So the money is available, but it doesn't mean they're just gonna get it, just because we put it in this budget.
Correct.
Again, that goes back to the review, that are done by the chief, myself, and I would.
Yeah, so, so then this increase we have in here is for six officers, but there's only five that are potential for that increase, because they're doing a merit increase, the new hire doesn't get a merit increase, they haven't been here.
Is that correct, Chief? Yes, sir, okay.
But, but we, with this increase, we've increased the starting, starting salary for new hires.
That's what.
So they're trying to get it in front when they come in the door. Their salary's been in, adjusted up to attract new employees. But I think that's where it's hard saying twelve percent, since twelve percent on the base, including that person.
On the base.
That would not get the merit necessarily, they would get the base.
Yeah, well, the, it would be the establishment of the, the new base, based upon if it were the twelve percent. Did I speak that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Right, so, humor me on the math. If it's seventy thousand dollars to start today, and they get a twelve percent increase, that's, what, seventy-three, seventy-five, seventy-four thousand? Right, the new starting salary for that individual would be seventy-four thousand, correct?
Correct, sure.
Okay, and no, my math doesn't work. So that's, that's where, so basically that increase would already be a part of the new hire salary, they would start at the higher rate.
But everybody else would be.
Would adapt based upon where they're at in the salary, that'd be correct.
Which is what happens when you employ, you put in your time, and then you get reviewed, and you get a raise of some level, and you work another year, and you get another raise.
You think?
You also have a sergeant in there as well.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Right, in this, in this structure, right here, that we're saying, in that money.
Right.
So is it not six, it's seven?
Correct, yeah, so how, okay, that's what, I guess, what I confusion.
We asked earlier.
How many officers are in this amount right there, police officers?
Seven.
Seven, not six.
Not six, okay.
Do you know how to do something, open up these things?
No, no. Any further discussion and or changes? Can I move back, what? I moved it back to. Okay? All right. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the budget based on the numbers now for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
There, let me get to your number. Uh, it would be, oh boy. Balanced at two million, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. So we have a motion?
A second.
We have a motion by Deputy Protem Gorton, and we have a second by Mayor Protem Shonrod. Eileen, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Shonrod.
Aye.
Ms. Wellen.
Aye.
Mr. Vetr.
Aye.
Mr. Gorton.
Aye.
The agenda item fifteen, discussion, consideration, and action on the ordinance adopting the fiscal year budget twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four at two million, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-seven. thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-seven cents passes. I'll get you the, the, the number there. So now, um, the next step in the process is discussion, item number sixteen, discussion, consideration and action on ratification of a vote on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual budget, which results in more revenues from the ad valorem taxes than previous year. And I have the, anyone does this, right?
Mm-hmm.
So who would like to provide the, the motion?
There's specific one.
Right. You have to read this. Okay?
I move to ratify the vote on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four annual budget, which results in more revenues from an ad valorem tax than the previous year.
My second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Chonrod and a second by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Gortney. We do, we now move the vote, correct?
Yeah.
All right. Eileen, could you please call the vote?
Mr. Vekr.
Aye.
Mr. Gorton.
Aye.
Ms. Wellen.
Aye.
Ms. Chonrod.
Aye.
Agenda item sixteen, discussion, consideration and action on the ratification of a vote for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual budget, which resulted in more revenues from ad valorem taxes than the previous year passes. Did I say that right? I don't, okay. All right. Item number seventeen, discussion, consideration and action on the Texas Government Accountability Association policy, along with the transparency and ethics interlocal agreement. Presentation, Mayor Pro Tem Connie Chonrod.
Thank you, mayor. So in addition to all that other homework we've been doing, uh, I did learn of the TGAA, which is not a government bureaucracy. It's actually an association that little towns and municipalities can join. It's an organization that helps, uh, town governments maintain a transparency and ethics code as they govern the towns. And so at each council seat, there was a contract and a description of the policy. And we watch the news all the time. There's a lot of controversies out there, scandals that happen in little towns, happens in big towns because they're so big, you can't keep track of everything. And they happen in little towns because everybody just goes on thinking everything's operating smoothly and you don't have to worry because it's all taken care of and there's no bumpy roads. Uh, so I Googled on my lunch break and I found thirteen cases of fraud just in my lunch hour in Texas, in Texas, in little towns, um, where scandals broke out and raised eyebrows of the citizens. And, and they really, they're so small, they really didn't see that this was happening until there was a whistleblower. Happened in Coffee, Texas, Progresso, Texas, Maniola, Sulfur Springs, Crystal City, in Alaska, Stinet, Eagle Lake, Ferris, Grapevine, Argyle, Richardson, Pilot Point. That's just the few that I found on a Google search during an hour. And that's just small cities. So, and, and I do watch the news. I'm very concerned what happens in government. And I, and I ran on transparency and the high ethics code for our town government. So I wanted to introduce this to council. It's basically a code to adhere to. And they asked, and they asked us to sign up and say that we will be a testament to this kind of government code and operation for the town of Double Oak. So the, you may not have heard of the TGAA, um, because it's new. It's, it's launching and they are spreading and they're trying to get towns to sign on board. And Double Oak would be one of the first to sign into this agreement. Um, again, for transparency and ethics by those who you elect into office and serve. Other towns have attempted policies, maybe not this yet, but they have attempted policies. And I looked at those. Kerrville, Sunnyvale, San Marcos, Kyle. Kyle has a commission. Leander, McKinney, Garden Ridge, Farmer Branch, Rosenberg, Austin, Bryan. Argyle's considering this. Uh, Copper Canyon, Highland Village has a board for ethics. Flower Mound, um, although they don't have anything that I could find, but they were questioned a lot about their ethics back in twenty fifteen. And unfortunately, we've even had an incident here in our town. So as we support this two point four million dollar budget, we could use little extra eyes on us and holding us accountable. Some of the things that this agreement holds us to is like just disclosure of relationships with vendors, making sure that that's all out in the open, that we don't cross lines. The, um, they should, it should help with audits, um, help us do a city by audit every five years to make sure we're doing good moves with our revenue and cost savings up. Um, options. Right now we're running without a, a treasurer. Um, it's oversight of the council on the budget dollars, but we don't, we don't have eyes on that. And I think that's important. So, but there's a lot in here. I don't know if, uh, again, I, there came any council questions, um, about it. I thought it was pretty straightforward. There is no cost immediately to the town to join this organization. And even, um, talking with representatives, I said, you know, what if we didn't like this? Is there an out for us? And they did have a fee to get out, but they rewrote it so that we have a super majority if we didn't like the, the organization. But one of the bonus things I saw in their offering was legislative updates. And we all have jobs outside of this one. So it's, it's not easy to stay up on the legislative actions. In fact, I've been trying to follow this Death Star law, um, and the controversy at state about that, that directly impacts us as the local, um, by what the state wants to do. So having a organization that will be able to send updates to us on legislative activities that could affect us in a small town, that's just another set of eyes to help us stay in front of issues that could potentially hurt our town. So when I read it, I didn't see any downsides. Clearly, I didn't. Uh, well, because I ran on ethics and transparency. So I didn't see any downside to this. So I was hoping to bring before council and see if you would agree with me that this would be something our town could engage in. Um, if there's a fee down the line, it's five hundred dollars a year, which is not even a drop in the bucket, but a miss spray on our, our bottom line.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Um, TML is there and they do all the legislative updates. They will send it right to your computer and they will tell you exactly what you should be looking for and what's going on. Even if it's going before it's been voted on, they will let you know exactly everything, whether it's elections, whether it's court, anything that's going on for a city or a town. That's their function and that's what they do. Especially, I mean, they're still letting us know things that are going in front of and are being looked at even for, not next year, but the year after. So TML is an excellent resource as far as that's concerned. Uh, with this program, who's going to be doing it? We don't have a town manager. We don't have a finance department. Who, who's going to be taking care of this?
I'm not sure that there's really much maintenance to it. We might have to put some forms in place and some like disclaimers, like the vendors, make sure that nobody, we did this recently with the financial policies for the investment committee, asked for a form to be crafted that nobody who served on the committee had an interest in the banks that we were investing in because we didn't want any personal bias or advantageous situation that wasn't upfront in front of the town's eyes. So.
So would council take, please?
Sure.
Okay.
Don't, I didn't see this as a lot of extra work.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not accusing anybody of inappropriate behaviors either. Um, just trying to stay in front of it. And I don't have a problem taking an oath. And I don't have a problem with us saying that I'm not profiting from this position here. Um, so I hope that answered your question. Lynn, I wouldn't want to see that become labor intensive for our office. Um, but I, I am concerned about protecting the town.
Well, and I get that. And there's a lot of interesting things in here. I've read every one of them, but there is some things in here that, that do need to be taken care of that we don't currently do. So, um, that's why I was just wondering who, who's going to be the lead on this? Is it going to be staff? Is it going to be council or in council and then working with staff or?
And this agency is going to provide support, similar to what TML would do. So I have never had though, any, any email from, because they are new and they are just coming into the North Texas, um, community. And there is a representative, uh, who just left the House of Representatives. He's, uh, very passionate about it, Matt Kraus.
Mm-hmm.
Um, huge Texas values and constitutional supporter and wants to preserve our rights and make sure we're following constitutional law and that we're doing the right, things on the right premise in government.
Do they possibly have something that they could show us, some type of information on the program as to what will need to be done? I mean, I don't know if they've got somebody that could come talk or somebody could show us what the program does and what the town would be invested in, what they would have to do.
Would the, the council read through this? Did they have any questions? Did you think we needed a presentation?
I would, I would like a presentation because I'm just going to tell you right up front, I didn't get a raise. So, you know, and, and part of this would be that, that, that obviously we can either discuss and consider tonight, but maybe we postpone the action to a future. I, I wouldn't mind seeing, uh, having someone come in and speak, um, to it. I just, well, first off, I don't have a vote, but I'm just sharing. Okay, I fell backwards and hit my head.
Transparency and ethics.
Right. And I'm, I'm really big on the fact that, that we've always said that a lot of times we force agenda items through quickly. And I don't want to necessarily do this if there's a little bit of complicated in this. So.
So this thing where it will be accountable to a non-government agency or?
No, they're just an association like TML. It is an association that helps governments make sure that we're doing what we need to do.
Just being part of this association, how does it stop any potential wrongdoing?
Well, I think that we help us put in place mechanisms to prevent it, like the investment policy language. We, it was in the policy book, but we never had a form that people signed to attest that they had no, uh, conflict of interest with the banking institutions we were invested our millions in. So I think they help us make sure we have those things in place to protect us. I mean.
Do they come in?
With vendors, a, a vetting, um, tool. Make them sign a statement saying they don't have any personal relationship with our public works side, anybody on council, the mayor, that gave them favor in a contract negotiation and assignment.
And that would be to like somebody that we're contracting to?
If, if we were going to ask for bids, they'd have to disclose it. We, we'd ask, do you have any, uh, conflict of interest? Uh, is there any engagement with anybody here in leadership that has a decision-making capacity to award the contract? They'd have to disclose it.
Well, you would hope they would disclose it. It's dishonest to start with.
But if they sign a document, they could be held to the document, the court of law. So, I mean.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to have a presentation on it. Yeah, there's, there's a lot, a lot, a lot of, what it's, I mean. Yeah, does the legal, I just see it there.
Is it possible for them to come?
I can certainly ask. I know that, um, the representative Kraus, he would have come on the eighteenth, but, um, as it turned out, he had a last minute conflict and we didn't have a meeting.
Um, I know there's a lot of other questions. We've got another item to go tonight. We've been here three hours and three minutes. Is it possible that we postpone this? Do, would somebody make a motion to postpone it? And then we, um, find a date and we have Mr. Kraus come in? Would that work?
I could agree to that.
I don't see any reason to postpone it in ethics and transparency, but if it makes council feel comfortable.
I'm, I'm not sure why we need a presentation. I, I do agree with Lynn that it's going to be like your work, some more down the line, but.
All right. I would, in that instance, then, in terms of our town administration, we need to work out some details on what that would be and how we would go about it. Believe me, if we didn't do a presentation, I, I would need a little town time as a mayor to understand what that workload is going to be and where I would offset that workload within the town. You have that.
Not sure it's going to be that much. Just, once it gets done, it's done. It's not going to happen again. It's not happening on a regular basis.
Do you have a lot of extra work come across your desk from TML?
From TML?
Yeah.
No, why?
Oh, because they were being compared.
This is not, that's nothing like TML. What you, what you.
An association though. Um, you said that they did provide legislative updates.
They provide legislative updates. Yes. You, all you have to do is go in and sign for them and they will send them right to your desk, exactly what's going on, who's supporting, where the bill is at, what you should be looking at in your elections, in your utilities, in your court, everything.
I did not know about that either.
Yes. That's how we keep track of where everything is at, what's going on.
Okay. Made a note.
I made notes. So I will say, I like what I'm reading here. There are some things that we, that we need to think about. And that's, so some of it is this vendor searchability. It does say we have, if we decide to go with this, on page two of the agreement, it says, "The member shall come into full compliance with the current version of the policy within six months from the date of execution." So it gives you six months to come into it. And that we would have within two months of the date, the agreement to governing body, a member shall be designated the specific individual public administrator's name. So I think that's where Lynn was asking who was going to be this person responsible. Within two months, we'd have to decide that of this agreement to have this person in charge of.
Okay.
Doing this per page two of this agreement. So those are two things that I noticed on it and just thought that I think the rest of things are, are relatively easy to do. It was the vendor searchability. I'm not sure what we have on our website right now. That's what it's going to be, is putting it on our website so people can see who our vendors, basically it's a list of our vendors and who they are and what they do for us after reading this. And so that it's publicly available for people of our town to know who our vendors are. And also then that goes back to us being held accountable for, say, I have no interest, no, no financial interest or personal relationship with any of these vendors that are coming up. So I, I do think it's a good thing for us to have as a council to be able to sign those saying that we don't have any conflict of interest for our, I know staff already has to do this, like you can't report to each other. That's all in that, the, the policy book. And so, but this just helps also make this for the council, make us responsible for guidelines.
So, and, and I, I like what I'm hearing too as well, but I still think there's some questions and some unknowns that I think we can quickly take care of, um, at, at a future time. So I, I think it's great. I, I, I really do. Um, but I, I hate the fact that where we're at and the fact that there's still some unknowns. And then I'm, want to make sure I understand the workload for the town.
Good point, because we've been, we've been, we've disclosed what we got that this one. So, um, okay, let me reach out and see if we think there are presentations.
So Lynn, in terms of the item, uh, motion to postpone?
We don't, we.
So we'll postpone seventeen, item seventeen to a future meeting. Item number eighteen, um, discussion, consideration and action on applications received for reappointment to the boards, commissions, committees, and an application to the drainage committee. Um, this is a presentation will be by the staff, but Eileen, I'm going to jump in here and, and put the names out there. And, and, uh, so re, and, uh, Billis, if I get this wrong, please correct me. I've got reappointment to B of A of Marty Robbins and Dirk Meilinger. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's right. Yes. Yes. Okay. So then we have a reappointment to P and Z, Robert Gary Goodman, Andrew Weaver, Laura J. Meislinger, Edward Melhop, and Dan McCormick. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then an appointment to the, now, is this road or drainage for Chris? We, I couldn't tell from looking at the sheet.
Well, I, I put down drains because.
That's fine.
Since it's a new, you split them out. We needed somebody.
I've, I've met Chris. He wants to be, start getting involved in, he's a younger gentleman, as if age doesn't matter. Um, but he does want to start getting involved in the town and this is the way that he thought he could do it. So, um, seems like a really good guy. And you know what? We want to recruit people like that. So that's, uh, if you don't mind, let's put him on the drainage. So we, all we have to do is, we have a motion to take action on the applications received for the reappointment and then the appointment. So.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
These are all people that have been on the board and have served very, very well.
Absolutely.
Um, and we didn't get tons of applications in for this.
Right.
So, um, I think we're putting. So, um, I think re-putting them back on the board, reappointing them is an excellent idea.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So there's a motion to reappoint?
It's a motion to reappoint.
So I move that we reappoint the listed members that have put in their application for reappointment to the, uh, town committees and they're not all committees, and
Boards.
Boards, commissions, commissions, that's the word I was looking for, boards and commissions.
Do we have a second?
Oh, do you want to add the, the person to the drainage?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, and add Chris Ernst to the drainage committee.
Allow me to, to amend that, to also add Chris Ernst to the drainage committee.
My second.
We have a motion by, uh, Councilperson Wellen and a second by Deputy Mayor Protem Gortney. Eileen, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Chonrad.
Aye.
Ms. Wellen.
Aye.
Mr. Beetrick.
Aye.
Mr. Gordon.
Aye.
Agenda Item eighteen, Discussion, Consideration, and Action. Applications Received for Appointment to Board, Reappointment to Boards and Committees, Commit, Boards, Commissions, Committees, and an Application for Chris Ernst to the Drainage Committee has passed. I would like to, to reach out and say thank you to Martin, Dirk, Robert, Andrew, Laura, Edward, Dan, and Chris for being a part of our town government. Thank you. Or, excuse me, our town, taking part in our town. Okay, thank you. Um, that brings us to item number six, uh, Council and Staff Announcements and Comments. Um, who did I start with earlier?
You always start with Mark.
All right, then, uh, Mayor Protem?
Sounds like Mike.
I have nothing.
All right.
Um, I did, so, um, the birthday committee received another generous donation from, um, old town meat market. Uh, they're sponsoring a popcorn booth for our movie night. So y'all have to save the dates. Um, we have now received 2,000 in outside donations and the committee is working hard on looking at contracts, uh, to apply those funds to and continue our work in trying to find other fun activities for those two days to celebrate the birthday of the town. And thank you for the patience in the budget, uh, talks tonight. I know maybe it wasn't what you want to hear, but it does not translate as you do not have the support of this council. We will continue to support your department, fire department as well. We took oaths to do so, we plan to do so. We have a whole town to look after and we're trying to do that in a fiscally responsible way. And I think we use logic in it, try to keep the emotions out of it. Um, so we do appreciate your service, we do support you. And I hope you feel that way and your officers do too.
Mark?
Nothing additional?
All right.
And nothing additional.
Thank you. Um, so Monday night, September twenty-sixth, since we did an adoption and ratification this evening, what takes place? Since I haven't seen the agenda.
Um, Monday night, we will vote on setting the tax levy and, um, oh, the annual contract with cleaning and newspaper record and all it, and that'll be.
Okay. And that will take place at seven o'clock?
Yes.
Monday evening and we'll have that, uh, out by tomorrow. Um, my final comments tonight before we, yeah.
Sorry, Billy Garrett, 103 West Route. I should have said this during non-agenda items way earlier, but, um, for the next two Saturdays, for, for part of the Double Oak Women's Club Children's Socials, I'm hosting, um, rock painting to replenish our garden out front for the DOPD, um, ahead of National Night Out. So if you have kids, please bring them nine to, nine to eleven, this Saturday and next Saturday. And I know you're putting it.
You are lead story tomorrow.
Thank you.
Um, so council's not an easy place to be. Yes, you, you get chosen at a, at a certain moment in time from, uh, your citizens. Some of those citizens believe in exactly what they want you to do. Others, um, will change along the way because of things that you do. Um, it's, it's not a very thankful job, it's a thankless job at times. Uh, I think that intense, intent is, is very important here and I don't feel that there's any ill intent on anyone's part. Um, but I know this is what makes our country great and that's the, the ability to have freedom of speech. And it's been, uh, oppressed and it's been depressed for many, 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 many years now because of what's happening in our society. And so as we leave here tonight, uh, just a couple of items, uh, first and foremost, um, we added six and a half percent to the, the, uh, the police officer's salary, which I realize wasn't the twelve percent. We added seven percent to Chief Gang. We've added, so in essence, we funded our police department for next year. Okay? Just because a preliminary budget happened to show twelve and ask was for twelve, our police department was refunded and funded more than what is typical. So freedom of speech is going to allow a lot of citizens to take that and spin it as many ways as they can. That's fine, every citizen has a right to do that. This council needs to know that you funded the police. Did we fund the police? Maybe not to your liking, but did we fund the police? Yeah, not to my liking, but yes. Okay. Um, I think that's important, but I respect everybody's opinion. I really do. Um, this budget process, um, was not easy, but I do want to give Billy, I want to give you some kudos because the way you set up the spreadsheet, after learning it and, and it, and it helped me very much. So I do want to give some kudos to Billy Garrett, the former treasurer of the town, for creating an instrument that the next person can use. And I'm going to do everything I can to make it better so that the next person and we'll just build off it. So thank you for the work that you did. Um, town administration, it started with you and I appreciate the hard work that you did. And we're never going to get everything we want, all right? But throughout the year, there's going to be undue expenses that are going to occur. And we have the funds in the town to deal with them. This council will deal with them. We will shore things up, we will spend the money we need and we're not going to let the budget just dictate everything we do. All right, that's my commitment as a mayor to drive this council with this budget. So, um, what happens outside the council chambers and inside of our community, uh, we should all feel good about the fact that we are continuing to grow our town, grow our revenues, grow our expenses. Um, and I'd just like to say thank you to everyone's hard work and thank you for all of the citizen input. There was no positive and negative tonight, it was all positive. So it is now ten forty-seven. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Let's adjourn.
All right, ten forty-seven, meeting is adjourned.